They're seen, they love to learn about things. They love education and this is another education opportunity for them to learn something.
And I think especially with the cuts in education programs and certainly in programs that seniors can participate in for educational opportunities, opportunities like this are very rare and we really need to support them as much as we can because we want them to carry on for many years and you know to have many seniors from all our senior centers coming along and getting this opportunity.
Lifelong education is very important for seniors. It keeps their minds active, it keeps them active, it keeps them interested in life. It's very important.
Now, Lilian, I know you're also an art teacher.
Yes, I am.
I know because every year we have our senior art exhibit at the City Hall in the Bridge Gallery there and some of Lilian's participants at her classes, they enter their works in our annual exhibition.
Yes.
So also tell us a little bit about that.
Well, it's an art workshop I started 18 years ago when I first started working down on Skid Row. There were no programs, there were no art programs or education programs for the people. So I just went to one of the shelters and asked them if I could set up a little art workshop and they said yes and I did. So like four or five years I was teaching in a shelter and then the company I worked for, SRO Housing Corporation, they wanted me to move it to our property and they gave me a loft for the artists to work in. It was very nice.
Yeah, and they're producing some amazing work.
Yes.
Really multimedia work, amazing work.
Yes.
And it's really just so important how important the arts are to seniors in their everyday lives.
Absolutely, absolutely. It's very important.
Thank you, Lilian. That was absolutely fantastic. For everyone here at Los Angeles Opera and for Aging Well in L.A., thank you for watching and we'll see you next time.
Earthquake!
That's why you need to be prepared. Put together an emergency kit with food, water, a first aid kit, a flashlight, radio, and some tools.
I can't believe it's an earthquake!
You're never too old to prepare.
Ah, get out of there!
Get the message? Be prepared.
Get out of the house!
Clamps.
Clamps.
Now a screwdriver.
Now a screwdriver.
Now, for the moment of truth.
To replace streetlights anywhere in the city of Los Angeles, call Operation Bright Lights today.
What if a disaster strikes without warning? What if life as you know it has completely turned on its head? What if everything familiar becomes anything but? Before a disaster turns your family's world upside down, it's up to you to be ready. Get a kit, make a plan, be informed today.
L.A. City View Channel 35, your city, your channel.
Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the City Council meeting for Wednesday, March 9th, 2011. Good morning, everybody, and welcome to our City Council meeting. If I could ask folks to begin to take their seats and council members as well. I want to thank those council members who are here. A very happy day after election to everybody. Congratulations to all the candidates who ran for office, to those who have been reelected, as well as to those who put themselves out there in the democratic process yesterday and to everybody who was out there who got out the chance to vote. We appreciate your participation as well in that most basic exercise of your franchise. I want to thank those council members who are here on time. Council members Alacon and Han, Corret, Krikorian, Parks, Perry, Rosendahl, and Wesson. We are going to be beginning with a basic quorum today. We do have Mr. Reyes, Mr. Wezar, Mr. Zine excused and Mr. Smith is arriving late. He is at a funeral. We do expect then, or still waiting, excuse me, on Council members Labange and just Mr. Labange if he'll join us and we'll start our meeting as soon as we can and Cardenas as well. Sorry, he's leaving early, but we expect Mr. Cardenas and Mr. Cardenas and Mr. Labange if you'll please join us as soon as possible. In the meantime, I want to welcome those folks who are here in council chambers who have taken time out of their day to join us, as well as those viewers on Channel 35 who have joined us. They watch us on the city's cable system which broadcasts these meetings live. Also rebroadcast them in the evening. We are available three other ways for your convenience. In person in our remote locations in San Pedro and Van Nuys City Halls, if that's closer to where you live, not only can you follow the council meetings there, but you can testify remotely over the TV from those two locations. We're also available online at lacity.org which is our webpage and there's a host of links to our agendas which are made available to the public, as well as the supporting materials. The Council Members' Read is available for the public as well and we have streaming webcasts of our council meetings at lacity.org. For your convenience, we also archive both audio and video proceedings of our council meetings there so that you can watch any of our past council meetings of interest to you as well. And then finally, finally, and then finally, we are available through telephones, 213-621-CITY. That's council phone and allows you to use your telephone to listen in to our council meetings and our committee meetings as well. We are still awaiting Mr. Cardenas and Mr. Labange. As soon as he is, or either one of them are here, that will constitute 10 members or two-thirds of our 15-member body and a quorum. In the meantime, any items that folks would like to give public testimony on, there are cards here in Van Nuys and in San Pedro. Just fill out a card and hand it to the city staff or the sergeants-at-arms and we will put that in the pile. Items will either get a public hearing in committee or here in council under the Brown Act. If folks would like to reopen items that have already had a public hearing, the council members can move that individually. Otherwise, any items that have not yet had a public hearing will receive their public hearing here in council. And then finally, if you would like to give general comments or comments of a general nature on items that we do have jurisdiction over in the city of Los Angeles but that do not appear on our agenda, just fill out "Public Comment" in the upper right corner of those cards and we'll be sure to hear your public comments as well. Again, this is a quorum call for council members Cardenas and Labange. Thank you for your patience while we wait those council members that are late and we will begin shortly. Thank you. Council members, while we are waiting a quorum, we do have one item that we will be voting on later, but I would like to, I know there's family here on a reward motion for a tragedy that happened. I would like to invite Ms. Han to publicize to the public right now the information on that reward motion that we will be voting on later. If we could please direct our attention before the meeting begins to Ms. Han to describe the circumstances of the case and to be with the family to hear some of their testimony here just before we begin the meeting. So I'd like to recognize Ms. Han while we await Mr. Cardenas and Mr. Labange.
Thank you. I think this is a good idea, even though we haven't exactly, we don't have quorum, but we will be voting on this motion later. But I do think that's kind of you, Mr. President, to consider the family's concerns. And I'm joined here this morning and these are always so, they're always tragic, they're always sad, they're always about a family member and today we're, I'm standing with the family of Angelica Jimenez, who was a 34-year-old mother of two young children who was suddenly a victim of a hit-and-run accident on 111th Place and Figueroa. And it was Valentine's Day, February 14th of this year. And I'm standing here today with LAPD South Traffic Division Detective Grace Brady and the Jimenez family, Davino, Maribel, Manuel, we have her sister, this is Angelica's sister who's with us. And she, like many pedestrians in the city of Los Angeles, she was returning home from work and she was, and this was 3:40 in the afternoon, walking through the intersection, the intersection actually has a signal, when a motorist in a 1991 Toyota Camry traveling west on 111th Place turned left onto Figueroa and struck and killed Angelica immediately. The investigators of this case have been unable to identify the motorists responsible for this incident and no further leads have developed, which is why today, colleagues, LAPD has asked if the City Council would consider offering a $50,000 reward. And I know I can count on your vote later unanimously to offer that reward. They believe that this reward just might lead to someone coming forward who has the information on who tragically killed Angelica Jimenez. The motorist was described as a black female in her mid-to-late twenties. Her vehicle was described as a four-door 1991 gray or blue Toyota Camry, license plate So basically, we have witnesses who have described the car, there's a license plate, but we just can't identify who actually was driving it and who killed Angelica. You know, these things are hard. It certainly won't bring her back to her family, but she certainly was a loving sister, a mother, a daughter, and to have her life taken away in such a terrible manner, I think calls all of us to want justice in this case, want some closure for the family. And we know that someone knows something, has seen something, has heard somebody talking about this and we hope this $50,000 reward will lead to that information. So I didn't know if Detective wanted to say a few words about this?
Yes, I'd like to introduce my partner, Ruben Mendoza. And we're just in hopes that a monetary reward will help or compel somebody in the public to come forth with information. We know somebody out there knows who we're looking for and we just hope this will help identify our suspect.
Do you want to give a number to call?
Yes, they can call 323-290-6063.
Thank you. Does the family ever want to say anything?
I don't, I don't think so.
Okay. All right, so thank you, colleagues. So thank you, colleagues. And I know, again, when we vote on this, you'll agree to offer this reward. We hope this brings some justice and some comfort to the family, and we want you to know that the entire city of Los Angeles is offering you our deepest sympathy, and hopefully we'll find something out. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Han, and our deepest sympathies to the family, and thank you so much to the officers who are pursuing that. Again, any information from the public would be extremely helpful, and we appreciate you for doing that, Ms. Han, and we'll vote on that shortly. I'd like to also recognize Mr. Alacon, who has a similar reward motion as well, to detail the circumstances of that case as well. Mr. Alacon.
Council members, we don't like to do reward motions, but we have to do them because they occur far too often. The incidents occur that create the need for these rewards. I'd like to mention that we don't do these rewards unless the Los Angeles Police Department tells us that they would like to have a reward and believe that information would come forward as a result of that reward. Today, we are here because LAPD has asked us to introduce this reward motion related to the death of Maria Peña. Maria was tragically killed less than a month ago, when she and three children, including her three-year-old daughter, were crossing the street in the middle of the day. It wasn't the middle of the night, they weren't obscured by darkness, but they were hit by a car as they walked across the street, and all three children were injured, and of course, Maria was killed. We're hoping that this reward will be the incentive needed to get somebody to come forward. LAPD believes that somebody knows what occurred, and maybe even the person who perpetrated the crime will come forward out of guilt. Maria was a wife, a sister. She was only 28 years old when she was killed by this hit-and-run driver. Now her three children will not have a mother to take care of them. Maria deserves to have her killer brought to justice, and the children deserve to have the man who injured them brought to justice as well. So today, we are introducing item 37, a reward motion of $50,000, and of course, we expect it to pass. But we are also here to make the announcement to the community that if they have any information, please contact Valley Traffic Division. Having said that, I'd like to introduce Captain Minsel from the Valley Traffic Division, who will explain more details about the incident.
Thank you, Councilman. Mr. President, honorable council members, on February 11th, about 2:00 in the afternoon, Maria Peña, 28-year-old resident of the community of Pacoima in the city of Los Angeles, was walking across the street with her daughter and two children that she was babysitting, when she was struck by a four-door dark-colored pickup. As a result of the detectives responding that day and continue on for the past three and a half weeks, we have run into a dead end as to identifying the driver of this vehicle. We're asking for this monetary incentive, so we could get the public to have some awareness, and maybe even the perpetrator to come forward and turn himself in. Detectives really need the help of the city council and the public in identifying and bringing closure to the Peña family, who is with me today. Her husband, Carlos, and her sisters, Laura and Maria, are here with me today. Again, thank you very much.
I'd like to ask Detective Bustos to explain in Spanish what happened, because this incident occurred in Pacoima, which is about 90% Hispanic. We think that the witnesses may be Spanish-speaking.
Muchas gracias, buenos dias. Quisiera hablar en español unas palabras acerca de lo que ocurrió el 11 de febrero de este año, eso de las 2 de la tarde. La señora Peña estaba acompañada de tres niños, una de dos años, tres años, y cinco años. La niña de tres años era la niña de la señora Peña. Los otros dos niños eran vecinos que ella estaba cuidando. Ella se dirigía a recoger a su niño de siete años, que estaba en una escuela cercana, porque ya se iba a acabar las clases. En el hecho de ir a esta escuela, estaba cruzando la calle Mercer y Spruau, en la comunidad de Pacoima. Cuando estaba en el proceso de cruzar la calle, vino una camioneta en dirección este. Era descrita como de un color gris. La persona que estaba manejando esa camioneta está descrita como un hombre latino de unos 30 años, que tenía el estilo de pelo corto pero puntiagudo. Después del atropellamiento, se echó a la fuga. Entonces, lo que estamos haciendo en este momento es un pedido al público, y también a ustedes, honorables concejales, para que aprueben esta recompensa de 50,000 dólares, porque no tenemos pistas a seguir, y esperamos que esta recompensa, que alguien haga lo correcto y nos den las pistas para poder resolver este trágico accidente. La señora, lamentablemente, falleció en el hospital. Los niños fueron llevados a un hospital de niños por medio de un helicóptero. Ellos ya salieron del hospital, pero como vuelvo a mencionar, la señora Peña falleció, y ese es un delito grave que queremos arreglar, y por eso estamos aquí, y también está la familia. Muchas gracias.
At this time, I'd like to ask her husband, Carlos, to step forward and ask the communities to come forward if they have information. Carlos?
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Carlos.
Good morning, my name is Santos.
Estamos aquí para, quiero ayudar a ustedes.
We are here to get some help from you.
Approbar esta recompensa.
To approve this motion.
Porque es un sufrimiento que estamos pasando, yo y mi familia.
My family and myself, we are going through quite a bit of suffering.
Mis niños a diario preguntan por su mamá.
My children ask every day for their mother.
No encuentro ninguna palabra para decirles. Tal vez ellos van a saber, van a darse cuenta.
I don't find words to explain them, but I think that they will be able to realize by themselves.
Ellos van a darse cuenta de lo que está pasando con el tiempo. Voy a explicarles cada palabra.
They will be able to realize by themselves what is happening, but with the time, I will be able to explain to them.
Pero si quisiera que la persona que, si alguien lo conoce, sabe de él algún familiar o algún conocido amigo, que llame a la estación de policías.
If somebody knows this person, I would like to ask them to please call the police department.
Para dar información de todo esto.
To provide information.
Estamos sufriendo bastante.
We are suffering a lot.
Bastante. Me sale a trabajar, no dejo de pensar en todo, en todo lo que pasó.
I cannot stop thinking about what happened.
Trato de no estar pensando cada cosa, pero es inútil.
I try not to, but it's impossible.
Sé que ella siempre está con nosotros, mis niños la recuerdan al igual como yo.
I know that she's always with us, and my children remember about their mother, and I also remember her.
Les pido, por favor, que me ayuden ustedes.
I ask you to please help me.
Approbar esta recompensa.
To approve this motion.
Que estaré muy agradecido con ustedes.
I will be very thankful to you.
Gracias.
Thanks.
We are also joined by Maria's sisters. Her sister, also named Maria Peña, would like to tell us from her heart a little bit more about Maria and how this has affected her family.
Hello, my name is Maria Peña, and I'm just here to, if you guys can help us to get this person that they, that he killed, my sister. It's been so hard for us to get information, because we don't know anything about the person, and we just want to know if you guys can help us with a word, so we can get the person, so he can do whatever he has to do in whatever place. So we really appreciate if you guys help us. It's really hard for the kids, because they always ask for her, and even for us, so we just waiting for any answers, any information that they can help to get this guy, and thank you.
This is a very good family, hard-working family. The sisters and the grandmother are all pulling together to take care of the kids, but this person needs to be served justice, and this family deserves to bring closure to that part of their grief. And so we would ask anybody with information, please come forward for the benefit, not only of this family, but for our community, that should not allow people, albeit maybe a mistake, they should be brought to justice for the mistakes that they have created. Thank you very much, in anticipation of your support for this reward motion.
Thank you very much to the family for being here. Our deepest sympathies to you as well, and thank you to our police department for their ongoing investigation. And again, we implore the public for any assistance in both of these cases as well. Mr. Corretts?
I just want to make one announcement, since we seem to have the time for it.
Please go ahead.
Of course, we all know that March 17th is St. Patrick's Day, but at our six city animal shelters, March 19th is going to be St. Patrick's Day, excuse the bad pun, but all of the animals in our shelters are going to be available at a subsidized discount rate at that day. There are going to be a number of cats and dogs that are going to be spayed and neutered and ready to go. And so I don't know if they'll have green ribbons, but that would be cute to go along with it. And so everyone that's thinking about adopting a cat or a dog in the city should think about coming down to our shelters on March 19th, and they can do so and get their animals more easily and at a discounted rate. So go online, look at your animals in advance, and come prepared to grab one of them.
Thank you very much. And I know we're going to be hearing some public testimony later on the proposed project where the Wilshire Grand Hotel is right now. Ms. Perry, did you want to frame any of that before we begin the meeting as well? And then we'll...
Is it all right for me to just talk about it?
Yeah, yeah, a little bit, you can.
Okay. All right, while we're waiting for quorum, so once we get it, we can just vote on it. I'm glad to be able to have this time to talk about the redevelopment of the Wilshire Grand Hotel. It's a hotel many of us have been familiar with for quite a while, and it's become outdated, and now we have a very viable, exciting alternative to redevelop the site. And I'm going to ask my colleagues in a minute to support the Planning Land Use Management Committee report. I want to express my appreciation to everybody who has worked on this project thus far, because it's been really quite laborious, 22 months through the review and approval process, to the Hanjin Corporation, Thomas Properties, first of all, for being willing to invest and to put forth this high-quality project that has an extraordinary community benefits package associated with it, and I'm going to tell you about it in just a minute. And then, secondly, the hard work of the Planning Department and the Office of the City Attorney, because as I said, this applicant has been working on getting the entitlements for this project for 22 months. And I want to thank Mr. Reyes and Mr. Krikorian, who considered the item at Plumb Committee, asked a lot of good questions, and thoroughly examined this project. And this is the first time our council is going to be considering this project, but it's not going to be the last time. The final ordinances for the development agreement, the supplemental use district, and the transfer of floor area rights will be back to the council for final approval on March 29th, and the city attorney is working on these documents. Now specifically, there's a recommendation in the Plumb Committee report regarding the transfer of floor area rights, and that's going to be continued to March 29th. Now, the big issue, the transit occupancy tax or the subvention agreement, will also be before committee and council before the end of this month, and the chief legislative analyst is still working on the agreement and the report now. So I've also introduced an amending motion with additional conditions of approval, and these conditions have been agreed upon by the Planning Department and the applicant. Now, the redevelopment of the Wilshire Grand Hotel is going to bring a lot of good benefit to the city of Los Angeles, and of course, the creation of new jobs, with a significant financial contribution to our general fund through new taxes and multiple public infrastructure improvements. The development agreement is going to provide the project applicant with certainty by maintaining all development rights granted for a period of 20 years in exchange for public benefits. The Wilshire Grand Development is going to provide local and regional benefits. There's approximately $74 million in community benefits in the development agreement. They include the creation of new city tax revenues, starting in 2015, at the rate of $22 million a year, net new taxes. The creation of new jobs, 7,300 new construction jobs, and 10,900 direct, indirect, and induced permanent jobs, of which 9,700 will be net new jobs above what currently exists on the site. I wanted to highlight this, because the developer entered into a project labor agreement and expressed willingness in the development agreement to participate in existing apprenticeship programs for all the construction trades and for the permanent hospitality jobs. The developer will comply with the city's living wage ordinance for non-retail entities within the project. And additionally, the developer will provide a comprehensive health care, welfare, and severance agreement for the existing 480 Wilshire Grand Hotel employees, and the developer has agreed to a collective bargaining agreement that will be applicable to the new hotel. The developer will provide health care benefits to the existing 480 employees while the project is under construction. This is costing the developer approximately $11 million. But I think this is a great and tremendous jobs package, and I think all of you should be very proud to support it. Now, the establishment of the Figueroa and 7th Sign District will establish standards and guidelines to improve the aesthetic environment, reduce visual blight associated with signage clutter, and regulate signage as part of the development of downtown Los Angeles. The Figueroa and 7th Sign District will ensure that the proposed signage is responsive and integrated with the aesthetic character of structures on which they're located and positioned in a manner that is architecturally compatible. The district will mandate well-designed signs that contribute to the central city or downtown's visual environment while protecting residential districts and adjoining non-residential districts from potential adverse impacts of signs. Signage is an important part of downtown's architectural context and contributes to the city skyline. In addition, the project will contribute $400,000 towards the study of a separate Figueroa corridor sign district to ensure that there are resources to begin this study expeditiously, and then will contribute $50,000 90 days after the development agreement for the project is executed. This particular proposed district provides a linkage from the proposed Wilshire Grand redevelopment project to the convention center and creates a campus. The redeveloped Wilshire Grand Hotel will contribute rooms to the convention center for long-term, three-to-four-day conventions, and will codify the arrangement through a room block agreement. So my office has worked closely with the city attorney and city planning, and this district, I appreciate the dialogue we've had. The redevelopment of the Wilshire Grand Hotel is iconic. This will be the first high-rise office building in downtown in more than 22 years, so the importance of this cannot be underestimated. Currently, the hotel as it is now is losing money and would close absent this redevelopment. Obviously, if it closed, there'd be a great loss of jobs and loss of tax revenue. So I hope that my colleagues will join me in moving this development forward today. The city would be sending the wrong message to potential investors and jeopardizing The city would be sending the wrong message to potential investors and jeopardizing real economic development if we act otherwise. This project does have to have all of its entitlements in place before April 1st in order to maintain its financing obligations. The redevelopment of the Wilshire Grand Hotel will contribute greatly to the continued redevelopment of downtown, the convention center, and other developments such as L.A.'s L.A. Live and Farmer's Field. The project has been, again, in the public review for over two years. The draft EIR and the final EIR were circulated during the legally mandated durations, and I have an amending motion circulating today which incorporates some of the...
Let's wait on any official business pieces, real quick.
Okay, yeah. Okay, great. I know we can't vote, so...
No, thank you for that public information.
Yes.
We really appreciate that.
I'm glad to have a chance to talk about it, so everybody can hear.
Absolutely. And that keeps things moving along. We do have our full complement of a quorum now too, so why don't we call the roll, and we'll go ahead and start moving. As folks know, usually if we don't have quorum at 10:15, cancel the meeting, given there was an emergency that a council member had unforeseen circumstances that are legitimate, so we had to wait. But we were able to continue moving the business that would have been conducted by making some public information announcements that are relevant to what we will be voting on. So with that, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Hello, Colonel Cardenas, Han, Weezer, Coretts, Krikorian, Labanche Parks, Perry, Roseendall, Smith, Weston, Zine, Garcetti, ten members present and a quorum.
First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
All right, Mr. Coretts moves, and Mr. Krikorian seconds. Without objection, those will be approved. Next order of business?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Roseendall moves, and Ms. Perry seconds. Without objection, those will be approved as well. If we can vote on items 36 and 37, our reward motions first, please, if we can take those up.
Would you like to take those together, sir?
Yes, please. Please open the roll on our reward motions, please. 36 and 37, correct.
Mr. President, those items are items for which public hearings have been, have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Right. There's no objection to those, and we, the folks that are there, we have no cards on that, we'll close. So let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved. We'll send those forthwith to the mayor for signature after this meeting. If we can run through the rest of the agenda, please.
Items one and two are items noted for a public hearing.
Okay. Do we have cards on one or two?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay, let's go ahead and close the public hearings. And council members wishing to call one or two special? Seeing none, let's go ahead and open the roll on those two. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Two is approved. One will carry over a week as an ordinance for a second reading. Next items, please.
Items 3 through 19 are items for which public hearings have been held. There is a request from a member to continue item 12 to March 23rd.
Okay, is there any objection to continuing until the 23rd of March, item 12? Seeing none, let's go ahead and do that. We'll call five special. Mr. Cardenas, yes?
Item three, if we could put it over for one week?
One week?
Excuse me, when we get back from the break.
Our next meeting is the 18th.
Okay, the 18th.
Okay. There's no objection. Item three will continue to the 18th. Mr. Roseendall?
Item 19, hold at the desk, we're circulating amending motions.
Okay, we'll hold that on the desk for Mr. Roseendall. Number 15, I will call special as well. Any other specials, colleagues? 3 through 19. Let's take up the balance then. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items 20 through 41 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration. There is a request from a member to continue item number 22 to March 22nd.
Okay, if there's any objection, seeing that, yes, Mr. Cardenas on that one?
I'm sorry, I'm...
Any objection to continuing 22 from anybody? Seeing none, we'll continue that. And yes, go ahead, Mr. Cardenas.
28 special for our...
Okay. And we have cards on 27 and 28. Do we have cards on other items, Mr. Clerk? We have cards on items 27 and 28, as you know. None others, sir. We'll close the other public hearings. Anybody wishing to call other specials? From this 39, from Mr. Roseendall? Ms. Han, did you have a special as well?
You know, I actually had a technical amendment to 36, the reward motion.
Okay, we'll reconsider that now, the amendment, just one moment. Let's take up the balance then. If there's no other specials, Ms. Perry?
Mr. President, I'm sorry, I didn't get up fast enough. I wanted to call special 18 and 28.
18 and 28. Will we consider 18? And I've got 28, we'll add you to the specials on that. No other specials, let's go ahead and prepare the roll on the balance of these items. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved, except for 20, which as an ordinance will also go to a second reading.
I'd like to ask 25 and 26 go forthwith, please.
Okay, without objection, we'll send 25 and 26 forthwith. If we can reconsider 18 and 36, please. If we can open the roll on those, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay. Those are before us. We'll call 18 special for Ms. Perry. And did you want to make the amendment now, or do you want to hold it on the desk?
I believe it needs to say 111th place.
111th place.
It only said 11.
Okay, we'll amend that.
Just a technical amendment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. Let's vote on 36 again. We can, please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved again. We'll send that still forthwith. And if we can send eight forthwith as well, please. Next items.
Items 42 through 48 are items scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold those on the desk? Mr. Parks, any of these for open session?
I would recommend 46 and 48 in closed session, and the others in open session.
Okay, let's go ahead and walk through then 42 through 45 and 47. You take up the first item, 42?
Item 42, there is a recommendation for settlement in the case entitled John Dunn versus City of Los Angeles through stipulations with requests for award at 71 percent, excuse me, 71 percent permanent disability, and in the amount of $121,297.50 payable at the weekly rate of $220 plus life pension benefits of $42.52 weekly in the amount of $19,485 for total settlement value of $140,782.50. After taking credit for the payment of $18,964 in permanent disability advances, the total new money payout will be $121,818.50.
Okay, let's go ahead and prepare the roll on that settlement. Please tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Item 43, please.
Item 43, there is a recommendation for settlement in the amount of $150,000 in the case entitled George Morris versus City of Los Angeles.
Okay. If nobody wishes to speak on that from the council, let's go ahead and open the roll on the settlement of 43. Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, next item, that is approved. 44?
Item 44, there is a recommendation for settlement in the case entitled Howard Kaplan versus City of Los Angeles through stipulations with requests for award at 77 percent in a total amount of $147,217.50 plus a life pension estimated at $102,507.60 at the weekly rate of $131.42 payable at the conclusion of permanent disability payments. After taking out credit for $15,737.75, the total new money payout will be $233,987.35.
Okay, let's go ahead. If no council members wish to speak in open session on that, please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Let's go to 45.
There is a recommendation for, excuse me, there's a recommendation to reject the plaintiff's offer of settlement in the case entitled Gary Roy versus Faot Lusuri et al.
Okay. That recommendation to reject is before us. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That it reject, rejection is approved. Next item, 47?
Item 47, there is a recommendation for settlement in the case entitled Thomas Fox versus City of Los Angeles through a stipulated award of 74 percent in the amount of $134,257.50 plus an estimated life pension of $18,557.2 at the weekly rate of $54.11 payable at the conclusion of permanent disability payments for a total settlement value of $152,814.52. After taking credit for $52,311.67, the total new money payout will be an estimated $105,502.85.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Members wishing to be heard on the settlement, let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That is approved. We can go to the continuation agenda?
On the continuation agenda, items 51 and 52 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
There's no objection to consideration. Those are before us. We do have cards on 51, I believe, is that correct?
We do, sir, item 51.
Okay. Why don't we hold those two together then, and we'll come back to those. Just before public comment, since we have opened up our informational discussions on item 18, why don't we return to item 18? And Ms. Perry would like to add any further comments on the record in the meeting. We can do that for item number 18. Then we will go to next item after that. Or we can just go... Ms. Perry, would you like to continue discussions on item 18?
Thank you, Mr. President. Did you, we were just talking before, so...
Yes, but that was all public information as well, so any other, any additional information you'd like to add now would be in order?
All right, well, if people don't mind, you have on your desks this very large booklet about the project itself. It's called the Wilshire Grand Redevelopment, and it's a briefing booklet for City Council This is a critical project. This is a transformative project. It's a catalytic project as we move forward in redeveloping not only downtown for the entire region for the city of Los Angeles, but to be able to put people back to work. It's, it is just a tremendous opportunity. First, I wanted to again thank Hanjin and Thomas Properties Group for putting forth this high-quality project with extraordinary community benefits. And thanks to the city team, the Planning Department, the Office of the City Attorney, my own staff. I want you all to know that this project has been in review for 22 months. So this is the first time the council is going to be looking at it, but it won't be the last. The final ordinances for the development agreement, the supplemental use district, and the transfer of the floor area rights will be back for final approval on March the 29th. There was a recommendation that comes out of the Planning Land Use Committee regarding the transfer of floor area rights, and that's going to come back on the 29th. And the transit occupancy tax subvention agreement will also be back at the end of this month. So a lot of the folks who are here today, I think you'll be back at least one more time. I've introduced an amending motion with additional conditions of approval, and the Planning Department has agreed upon them, as has the applicant, and that will come back. The thing that's really great about this project is the meaningful benefits that it brings to the city in addition to the creation of the new jobs, in addition to the significant financial contribution to the general fund through new taxes and the multiple public infrastructure improvements. Now, the development agreement provides the developer with certainty in maintaining development rights for 20 years. In exchange, we were able to get to pull together a package of community benefits. And the Wilshire Grand Development provides excellent local and regional developments. There's approximately $74 million in this benefit agreement, and that includes the creation of new city tax revenues, starting in 2015, of $22 million a year under the general fund. The development and creation of new jobs, 7,300 new construction jobs, 10,900 direct, indirect, and induced permanent jobs, of which 9,700 will be net new jobs. Those are jobs that didn't exist before. This needs to be highlighted because the developer entered into the project labor agreement and participated in existing apprenticeship programs for the construction trades and for the permanent hospitality jobs. The developer agreed to comply with the city's living wage ordinance for non-retail entities within the project. And the developer will provide comprehensive health care, welfare, and a severance agreement for the existing 480 Wilshire Grand Hotel employees. And the developers agreed to a collective bargaining agreement that will apply to the new hotel. So the developer, giving the health care benefits while the project is under construction, is willing to do that at a cost of $11 million. This is a good jobs package, and I'm pretty sure you should all support this without hesitation. Now, there's the establishment of the Figueroa and Seventh Sign District to establish standards and guidelines to improve the aesthetic environment, reduce visual blight associated with signage clutter, and regulate signage as part of the development of downtown Los Angeles. The Sign District will ensure that signage is responsive and integrated into the aesthetic character of the structures on which they are located and positioned in an architecturally compatible manner. Additionally, the district will mandate well-designed signs that contribute to downtown's visual environment while protecting residential areas and adjoining non-residential districts from potential adverse impacts of signs. Signage is an important part of downtown's architectural context and contributes to the city skyline. The project will contribute $400,000 to the study of a separate Figueroa corridor sign district, and will ensure that there will be resources to begin this study expeditiously. And then, another $50,000 90 days after the development agreement for the project is executed. Now, this Sign District creates the linkage between Wilshire Grand and the convention center, creating a campus setting from that point to the convention center. And the redeveloped Wilshire Grand Hotel will contribute rooms to the convention center for long-term, three-to-four-day conventions, and will codify that agreement through a room block arrangement. This is going to be the first high-rise office building in more than 22 years. We can't underestimate the importance of this. This hotel at the present time is losing money, and if it closed absent redevelopment, it'd be a loss of jobs, a loss of tax revenue, and a hotel that was closed. So we must move this development forward today to make sure that this doesn't happen and to show potential investors that we are serious here in Los Angeles about economic development. The project has to have all of its entitlements in place before April 1st in order to maintain its financing obligations. The redevelopment of the Wilshire Grand Hotel will contribute greatly to the continued development of our region and the viability of the convention center, Farmer's Field, and other downtown developments. Again, I want to say that this project has been under review for 22 months. The draft EIR and final EIR were circulated for the legally mandated durations. Now, I do believe I have an amending motion circulating which incorporates some consensus language from adjacent property owners. So I ask that you approve this as amended today, and thank you for your consideration for the Wilshire Grand Development Project.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. We will reopen the, because of the amendments on this, we will reopen the public hearing on item 18. And the city attorney has recommended a minute per speaker. Ms. Perry, is that all right with you?
Yeah, that's fine.
It's a limited public hearing, okay? And thank you to the patience for folks who are here. Tom Moxley from Building Trades is our first speaker, then David Kirsch is our next speaker after that from Carpenters. While he's walking up, the city attorney is just going to make a clarification very quickly?
Thank you, Mr. President. Recommendation five, actually, the development agreement is not being approved today. Our office has transmitted the development agreement, and it will be before council on March 29th.
Thank you. Good morning. Microphone's yours.
Good morning, Mr. President, City Council. My name's Tom Moxley. I'm president of the L.A. Orange County Building and Construction Trades. And at this time, since I only have a minute, I could ask all the tradespeople to stand up in the building trades. This is a great project, and you're looking at the faces of Angelenos who've been out of work with 40 percent-plus unemployment. This will create jobs, opportunities for careers for those Angelenos to enter into the construction. It's jobs that we need and it's ongoing jobs. The developer has come to us, agreed to a project labor agreement, which means local hire, local people, and benefits the community. It's also the much-needed with the upcoming convention center and the need for more rooms. It's close to that, and it provides that. This is why the Building and Construction Trades in L.A. supports this project, and we ask that you do too. Thank you.
Thank you very much. David Kirsch is our next speaker. After that will be...
Good morning, David Kirsch. I'm here on behalf of the Carpenter's Contractors Cooperation Committee, which is comprised of the 65,000 members of the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters and its signatory contractors. I am very pleased to be here and offer our strong support for this important and exciting project. All of you today and on the 29th have an opportunity to put many people back to work and offer a brighter future for many in our community. This is precisely the kind of economic development that we need to help us move out of this downturn. Jobs, jobs, jobs. Not rhetoric. Jobs, 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 not rhetoric or an empty feel-good statement, but the real thing, as this project will generate thousands of good-paying, quality jobs during construction and after the development is completed. In regards to construction, as been stated, it's going to be a union project. The developer has reached out and made a commitment to build a project using the top-notch skills, training, and experience possessed by members of the Carpenter's Union and the proven value and benefit of our apprenticeship programs. Additionally, we're a neighbor, and we're very happy to see this project move forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We've got as our next speaker Frederick Piedmont Brown, and after that is Arnold Sacks. Piedmont Brown. Is Mr. Brown here? There he is. Come on down. I know you already came down once, but now you get your own chance to speak. Arnold Sacks, and then Ann Williams will follow. Good to see you.
Good morning, Council. Good morning, Council members. My name's Piedmont Brown, I'm president of the Ironworkers Local 433 in Los Angeles. We're in great need of support of this project, and we would appreciate any help from the City Council today for our members and for the local hire of this great city. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Piedmont. Arnold Sacks, and then Ann Williams will follow.
Thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. No rhetoric. So what about the Grand Avenue project? What's the stand on that? Why is that taking so long? This is getting funding, why isn't the Grand Avenue project getting, living wage ordinance is going to be for the employees? Is that the living wage ordinance that's in effect at the airport, or the other living wage ordinance? You know, the one at the lower rate of pay? Seventy-four million over twenty years? That comes to seven million, a little over seven million dollars a year, but, excuse me, three-point-seven million dollars a year. And how much, and the bed tax is going to be waived for this project? You know, the L.A. Live project, the bed tax is costing the city's general fund over twenty million dollars a year, oh, excuse me, ten million dollars a year, over two-hundred-and-forty million dollars over the length of that program. Where are you going to replace that funding from? Not going to cost the city anything. Jobs, jobs, jobs. What about the nine-hundred-and-thirty million dollars you had in redevelopment? Where are the jobs, jobs, jobs on that?
Ann Williams is our next speaker. After that is Kevin Norton.
Good morning. I'm Ann Williams with the Central Cities Association. On behalf of CCA, VICA, and the L.A. Chamber of Commerce, I want to express our strong support for the Wilshire Grand Redevelopment Project. This project holds so much opportunity for the continued positive transformation of downtown that it's really not overstatement to call it a game changer. And you've heard about all the benefits, so I'll just add that downtown L.A. has matured as a city in the past decade, and increasingly, it embraces its potential to be a real downtown with the dynamic visual excitement and intensity of use that goes along with that. And the Wilshire Grand Redevelopment is consistent with a modern vision of what a real downtown should look like in the twenty-first century. So we thank you and hope you'll support the project.
Thank you very much. Kevin Norton is next, and then John Choi will follow. Good morning.
Good morning. There, Kevin Norton, IBW Local Eleven, Electrical Workers. Far too much unemployment in construction is a catalytic product, project that would create thousands of jobs, something we need in the city desperately, jobs and quality of life for our residents, and I wholeheartedly implore you to support this project and approve your decision today. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Appreciate your comments. John Choi is next. After Mr. Choi will be Alvaro Manzano.
Good morning, Council members. My name is John Choi, and I'm here representing Maria Elena De Razzo, the Executive Secretary Treasurer of the L.A. County Federation of Labor. We represent hundreds of thousands of workers throughout L.A. County, including nurses, teachers, firefighters, janitors, and security officers, public sector employees, and workers in the entertainment industry. And of course, we represent the hundreds, the thousands of hotel workers and members of the building trades that will be affected by this project and that are in this chambers here today. I'm here to urge you to vote in support of moving this project forward. I'd like to emphasize that the owner and the development team for this project have shown a willingness to take into consideration the impacts this redevelopment will have on the hundreds of hotel staff who currently work at the hotel.
Sorry, we have to try to keep as even as possible the clock, because a minute to a person.
Absolutely, thank you. Please urge your support today. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Alvaro Manzano is our next speaker, and Kevin Bass will follow. Good morning.
Good morning, City Council members. My name is Alvaro Manzano, I work for Wilshire Grand Hotel as a cook, twenty-two years. I come to represent all the coworkers as a cook, dishwasher, housekeeper, and front desk, and I come to let us know, I support, or I asking to support this new hotel. He get it for new yacht, like example right now, he make the good agreement with the owner hotel, to when they reopen the hotel, he want to come back the coworkers with the same position and the same money we're supposed to made right now, and also vacation. Appreciate it to support this construction. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Appreciate it. Kevin Bass is our next speaker. After Mr. Bass will be Stuart Waldman. Good morning.
Good morning, Council members. I'm Kevin Bass, painter in L.A. Trades. I really just want to concur with the rest of my union brothers and sisters. We have forty percent of people out of work, and we need this also. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bass. Stuart Waldman is our next speaker. Mr. Waldman here. Stuart Waldman from VICA, not Mark Phillips. After Mr. Phillips will be Mitch Menzer. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Mark Phillips, I'm Vice President of Brookfield Properties. Brookfield owns three major high-rises in downtown Los Angeles, as well as the Seventh and Fig Mall. We're pleased to be able to stand here today in support of this project, as modified by the additional conditions that Councilwoman Perry has noted. It's been a long, hard process to resolve the concerns we've had, and we're very pleased with the result. I'd like to thank Hanjin, Thomas Properties, for their work on this, as well as, in particular, I'd like to thank Councilwoman Perry and her staff, the members of Plum and their staff, at the Planning Department, Kevin Keller, Shawna Boston, and Nick Marisich, J. Kim at L.A. DOT, and Michael Bostrom at the City Attorney's Office. They've all been instrumental in helping move this forward and get it to where it is today. Again, appreciate your support. You also have our letter of recommendation for your records. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your testimony. Mitch Menzer is our next speaker.
Good morning, Mr. President and honorable Council members. Mitch Menzer of the Paul Hastings Law Firm, representing the applicant, Hanjin International Corporation and its affiliate, Korean Airlines. On behalf of the applicant, we're very pleased and very proud of this project. I also want to confirm that the additional conditions before you represent the work between the applicant, neighboring property owners, to address a number of issues of concern, and we have agreement with them, and we're very proud to have their support as well. I won't belabor all of the wonderful benefits of this project, but I do want to thank, on behalf of Hanjin and Korean Airlines, Councilwoman Perry for her continued support for this project throughout, and we're very pleased to be here and to be moving the project forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Mr. Waldman here? I think Mr. Waldman may have left, so if we can go to Van Nuys. Rick Nightengale is our next speaker.
Yeah, Rick Nightengale. Yeah, I know how important it is to turn around and work on a building like this. I worked on the Biltmore on the first remodel, and it was a very big job, per se. But I still go back to, what happened to free enterprise? I mean, this is what this country was developed on, is free enterprise. People and corporations and people getting together and building something. I realize that a lot of people down there need to go to work and so forth, but it is not supposed to be on the taxpayers' money. I don't know, it's a billion-dollar job, but how much is it going to cost the taxpayers? That's all it's about. I believe in that the council should negotiate and figure out what should be done to build this project, but it shouldn't be on the backs of the taxpayers. Same as that stadium, you want it, it's not supposed to be on the taxpayer, but you want bond to be taken out, and we're responsible for them. That's the only thing I'm concerned about. I hope they get it where they can build it, but not on the taxpayers' dollar. Thank you.
Thank you. That'll close the public hearing that was reopened. Thank you for the testimony. Ms. Perry? Ms. Perry? That closes the public hearing on that. That closes the public hearing on it, if you want to...
Great, thank you. I also wanted to add a few additional words. Hanjin is the company that is doing this development, and I think in Korea, development is done very differently, and much more expeditiously, and a whole different approach to things. And I think at times, they didn't understand our process and got really frustrated, but I wanted to tell them how very hard Thomas Properties worked to make this particular project move as quickly as it did through the city process, and yet complying and abiding by all of our reviews and our requirements, and working out all of the differences between the adjacent property owners. And so I wanted to express my absolute confidence that, working with them, we will make this project happen, and happen in a way that the financing is not endangered, and that we should be able to get this done as proposed. So I just wanted to say that as a message to the folks at Hanjin, so they understand we are extremely serious, and thank you again to Thomas Properties. So, Mr. Chair, if there are no folks in the queue...
There are a few folks in the queue who'd like to speak to this, so if we could, I'll come back to you if you'd like.
Great.
Thank you very much, Ms. Perry. Like a call...
Mr. Miller is available for questions.
Mr. Miller's available for questions, but right now, we're going to hear from Ms. Janice Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to rise and really thank Councilwoman Perry for the hard work that it takes to bring a project like this forward in this environment, in this day and age. And really, this is yet another good project that Ms. Perry has been able to sort of shepherd through in tough economic times. And I had a great time this morning, out there talking to my electricians and carpenters and ironworkers and hotel workers and the glazers and the carpenters. I mean, you know what? This is a great project, lots of lights, lots of glass, that really is the kind of project that will put people back to work, will transform an area of downtown in such a great way. And I will tell you, for all of us on the City Council, we're all about jobs, jobs, jobs. But some of us don't have these kinds of projects in our own council districts, so it feels good to cast a vote today in favor of a good project, a green project, a sustainable project, that also puts all of you back to work. This is a good day, we're on your side, and we're going to have a unanimous vote, I'm sure, to make this project work. I think.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hahn. Mr. Rosado, Mr. Bill Rosado.
Yes, and thank you, Mr. President, and congratulations on your reelection. Jerry, come on up for a couple of quick questions. We want to know about the city general fund, we want to know about what percentage goes to what, what happens with the bed tax. Just give us an insight into the particulars here.
Certainly. Excuse me, well, first of all, to be clear, that agreement is not before you today. We're still negotiating it. But the council policy on using site-specific revenue has been that projects do not get more than fifty percent of the net new revenue that's generated to be invested back in the project, so that the city gets fifty percent as well for any increased demand on services.
So bottom line is, the city will, in this general treasury, reap some benefit out of this.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, good. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosado. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I rise in strong support of this today as well, and rise to really thank Ms. Perry. I don't think folks realize how big this is in this environment, to find the investors who are willing to put people back to work. I was just with some friends in the building trades two days ago, and I was asking them what their unemployment was at one particular local. They said it's officially twenty percent, but we used to bill about two-point-one-million hours a year, we're down to one-point-one-million hours. So there are those who are completely out of work, and those who are working are barely scraping by. This business manager said, every single week, I get a call from a member saying, "I'm losing my home, I'm literally losing my house." And he says, "What do you want me to do? I can't do anything. My heart breaks for you, but there's literally nothing I can do." We are beginning to see some light ahead. We're beginning to see projects like this that believe in a city that can say yes, instead of getting to know, which we're so good at. We find a thousand ways of killing projects, but there's only one way of getting it done. And because of the strong support that we've had here between business and labor, a responsible way of making sure that we don't take public monies away from the streets and the sewers and the things that we need, but we realize that increased economic activity, when there are folks that are making food in the kitchen, when there are ironworkers who are putting down that rebar, when we have folks who are able to come and drive taxi drivers, drive tourists who come to an exciting city, that lifts us all up. That means tax revenue that comes to the city of L.A. for all of our neighborhoods, not just downtown. And so I rise in strong support, and this has been Ms. Perry's passion. She has been able to do this in downtown. Shortly, we're going to be speaking about a project in Hollywood as well. We can see projects move forward finally, and it is the only way that we will see our way out of these dark days and out of this recession. So I urge us to all move forward with due haste on this, to make sure that we protect ourselves and the public pocketbook, but let's get to yes, let's get some people back to work, and let's build a great city. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti. A great Jan Perry to close.
Oh, are we already closing? Oh, it's all right, I'm taking home now. Okay, well, I'm going to take it home. Now, I just want to highlight again, you know, what's so significant is that the people who are working there now and will be not working there once the building is demolished will have a health, welfare, and severance agreement in place. And it's pretty extraordinary that you find a developer that is willing to do that and to take care of people in this manner, so that they can continue to survive during the time period the new hotel is going to be built. But again, you know, a lot of times, people throw around job numbers, and, you know, they feel large and big and impersonal, but the thing that is so worth our voting for this and worth fighting for, and of course, this is not the last time we're voting, this is just this part for today, is the net new jobs, and that should be music to everybody's ears. Those are jobs that just didn't exist before, that are now coming into our city center, into downtown, and will remain there. And because of our local hire ordinance, and all the work that we have done up to this time, people from the area, our local residents, will have first crack at getting these jobs. So I ask for an eye vote, and Mr. Chair, if you would go ahead, if there's nobody else in the queue...
Thank you very much. Ms. Perry, we have eighteen A as amended. No speakers on the queue at this time. Mr. Clerk, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much, Ms. Perry. Mr. Clerk, Mr. Cardus?
Thank you, Mr. President. If we could reconsider item number three?
And Mr. Clerk, we're going to reconsider item number three. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Mr. Cardus?
Thank you very much, members. Thank you for the reconsideration. It's a simple item in my district on Montague Street, and I just needed to clarify one more thing with my staff. Everything looks excellent, I appreciate your eye vote. Thank you.
Okay, no speakers on the queue. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Eleven ayes.
Mr. President, for clarification, the ordinance will continue for a second read until Friday, March eighteen.
Very good. Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. Now, we're going to call item number five, recognize Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you. I'd like to take five out of order now, and to our building trades folks that are still here, this is a second project here today in Hollywood. In many ways, the twin engines of economic activity in the city of late have been in downtown and in Hollywood. In fact, it's some of the only neighborhoods where still having some groundbreakings and ribbon cuttings of projects of any scope and size. I want to thank the Hollywood community that has been a big part of that, and that has made sure that we take streets that were once vacant and breathe life back into them. Today, though, we have a project before us that is, I think, necessary to move forward, but a little more complicated than that, so I'm going to ask my colleagues to bear with me while we lay some things out in the public record. We have two different issues. Right now, for folks who have been along Vine Street, a street that was named for the grapevines that used to grow there when Los Angeles County was the number-one wine-producing county in the country. Years later, when Hollywood went, well, the temperance movement came and it became a dry town, after that, it was replaced by the movie industry, and Vine Street became synonymous with the studios, with the radio shows, with the live TV that made Hollywood's first golden age so famous. For years, though, in the last twenty or thirty years, Vine Street and Hollywood and Vine became synonymous with what had gone wrong in Hollywood, with the crime, with the prostitution and the drug dealing, and the gang members that were on our streets. And yet, the Hollywood community came together, ironically, because we talked a lot about redevelopment yesterday, it was the business community and the residential community of Hollywood that said, "Let's have a redevelopment area where we say, 'Nothing has happened for twenty years.'" We've had projects that have said that they are going to breathe life back into Hollywood, but they are not working. So let's take a bet on the future. Let's put a redevelopment area in... Let's put a redevelopment area in there, get some people back to work and start building up.'" And lo and behold, 10 years later, the Academy Awards came back and the Kodak Theater was built. Small businesses started filling in the infill between those streets. Big projects like the ArcLight took things like the Cinerama Dome, which had been vacant, and brought jobs back and economic activity. And now in Hollywood, when you go there, one of the best problems we have right now is traffic, which I'm busily trying to solve. But before, we had no traffic, now we have so many people that that is a good problem for us to be solving. Today, though, we have a development on the lot that is at Selma and Vine, one of the most famous intersections, just to the north of it is Hollywood and Vine, Sunset and Vine, where we used to have studios there, next to the incredible Ricardo Montalban Theater, which has been an amazing cultural asset in the area, across the street from the new Red Line Development that was done above that for the W Hotel and the apartments that are there. We have seen a revitalization, but we still see some empty lots, which are unsafe places at night, which do not make pedestrians feel welcome, and which leave Hollywood half-finished. We have not seen new commercial building built in Hollywood in some time, besides the one exception of the Technicolor Building at the Sunset Gower Studios. We've not seen new commercial space built. And yet, we've seen companies want to come to Hollywood. Nielsen, which is the company that does all the television ratings, came to us years ago and was able to get into what was called then the House of Blues Building on Sunset and Vine. They brought over 500 jobs, averaging over $70,000 per person, because Hollywood got it done. But I can't tell you how many other folks who have wanted to come to Hollywood simply can't find the space. And those that are in Hollywood in Class B office space want Class A space. These are agencies, these are production companies, these are the jobs that can't be outsourced. And we talked about Ms. Perry's project in downtown. The three Ts are the big economic drivers of this economy: trade, tourism, and technology. Well, we talked about two of them. The Hanjin Company is all about tourism and trade. Now we talk about technology, the Hollywood entertainment industry that has been one of the best imports that we have anywhere in the world. The proposal that is before us gets a little more complicated, though. This empty lot was owned by somebody who isn't a big fan of the CRA. The CRA was looking to develop it, but they would not sell directly to the CRA. So they had before them a piece of property that then a developer was willing to buy, pass on to the CRA. Usually, it's the CRA that buys the piece of land. But in this case, since that owner wouldn't give it to them, that developer came in instead and bought the land and then conveyed that to the Community Redevelopment Agency. Bottom line is, we own this piece of land now. There has been considerable money put in by this developer to develop the project that you see here in the horseshoe, colleagues, beautifully designed Class A office space building. The wrinkle in this has been the CRA and the conduct that the agency had. And I have raised questions in here about the appraisal of that land in the first place, in which we had one appraisal that was done and learned later through good acts of the public that there was a second appraisal that had been done, that had come in lower. And the question was, did we pay too much for this land? Now, these are two separate questions, because today before us, we have an option of, do we build this project or not? And then what do we do about the process that seemed to have not worked well? And I appreciate Mr. Cardis and Mr. Alacon, and especially our Chair, Mr. Wesson, for asking those questions, which, for those of you who haven't been in committee, were asked as well. There's no question in my mind that CRA's conduct in this manner, overall, must be aggressively scrutinized. And while I'm pleased to see that processes for making these sorts of assessments, appraisals, excuse me, have been changed, I still am not satisfied that we know who did it and why and what consequences will come to those people. I've just heard that they've moved on, they're not the people that are in the Hollywood office right now. I've asked the tough questions, and I've sent this project back to the CRA repeatedly, and I've made them investigate and report, and we put it through committee two times. And they will continue, and I want to hear that from the CRA today. I know I'm going to be a little bit over my time, but I'm going to press a button again and ask some hard questions of the CRA. And I want them to assure the people of Los Angeles of what the issues are and what is at stake on that. It's my understanding that the seller, though, of this land is not a party to this development agreement. So issues regarding that appraisal process, and I expect them to continue to be held accountable for that, and I want to hear about that, does not affect the viability of this project. Right now, we have the option of saying, okay, we could say, "Kill this project, let's just leave that empty lot vacant." We still would own it, though, we would have no developer there, and we would start all over again. We have to correct what went wrong, but since we own this right now, the option is, do we move forward or do we not? I think it's more prudent to see this project move forward under the development agreement before us, and I'll tell you why. This land is already purchased. I believe that not moving forward with a piece of land that the CRA paid millions of dollars for and that would sit idle, because in this market, nobody else is going to step up right now and make that development happen. I also think that in addition, when we look at the money that's been put in, we would be looking in this market at a further subsidy if we say, "Bring in new developers and see who will do this." And we also would be looking at two- or three-year delay, in my opinion, on this as well. In addition to the CRA dollars, millions of private funds have been put in this project, so I'm inclined to think that the current investors have a stake in getting this finished. And that is a good thing for the workers, and it's a good thing for Hollywood. Furthermore, my understanding is the agreement we're voting on today contains myriad requirements that must be met. In other words, if they don't meet these, we still own the land, we have the best insurance policy possible. If it does not move forward, ownership of the land stays with the people, it stays with the city, and I want CRA to confirm that we are protected, that our action does not transfer title of this land to the developer. A third wrinkle, there's a hamburger stand for folks who have ever been there. There's a family that owns a little hamburger stand. And we negotiated very hard to make sure that the little guy didn't get trampled on while we move Hollywood development forward. And without some agreement today, Molly's Burgers, which I've had many tasty burgers at over the years, otherwise just sits there, nothing happens to them, they don't get compensated, they don't move forward, and they're in limbo for a long time as well. So colleagues, I believe our action today should be guided by what gives us the best chance to build some Class A office space that Hollywood hasn't seen in 25 years. This type of space for entertainment and other companies, they look to in Burbank, Culver City, and other places, but not the city of L.A. And we should be guided by the best chance for construction jobs, new business and permanent jobs, and millions of dollars in spending and revenues for our budget. This isn't about letting the CRA off the hook today, I want to be very clear about that. We have a chance to make sure that the nonsense in this case doesn't cost Los Angeles much-needed jobs. And with that, I don't know if there's others on the queue, otherwise I'll press my button and keep going.
Thank you very much. I would like to have a call on Mr. Cardis.
Thank you very much. Could somebody from the CRA come forward and explain to us what the current procedures are when it comes to appraisals and the standard, and whether or not that is a documented policy now rather than a rule of thumb, perhaps? I do have in my hands, the CRA did hand me a document, and I read the summary, and I've seen the detailed, I think it's three pages, of the current procedures when it comes to utilizing appraisals within the CRA. One of the issues that was talked about several times publicly in the committee was, way back in the day, when this was appraised before, there were two appraisals, and one of them was actually paid for by the CRA, which should be the appropriate procedure, and one of them was not paid for and garnered by the CRA, but it was utilized in the process somehow or some way. My point today is to make sure that the CRA will not do that again, and that the CRA has procedures in which they will not allow themselves to do that again. And then, what is the current procedure of the CRA today?
Mr. President, Cal Hollis, the Chief Operating Officer of the Redevelopment Agency. We have specific written procedures, they're called AD 1002, which is a real estate appraisal procedures. Those were changed as a result of the review of those appraisals, of the old procedures that change, and procedures took place approximately a year and a half ago, before this item was disclosed. These procedures do not permit use of a third-party commissioned appraisal for purposes of acquisition of property. The appraisal must be secured by the Redevelopment Agency, paid for by the Redevelopment Agency, and the appraiser must report directly to the Redevelopment Agency for purposes of acquisition. So I think the procedures are very clear.
Okay. So, and those procedures were adopted when? And in what format are they made available to the various people within that Department of CRA?
They were effective February 22, 2010, approximately a year ago. They are written procedures, they are available to all of our staff through our online system, and they are implemented by our Real Estate Department or Deputy Director of Real Estate. And that department reports to the Chief Operating Officer.
Okay. So who's the head of that department? What's the name of the person today that's the head of that department?
Phil Trando is the Deputy Director of Real Estate, and he reports to me.
So basically, these procedures are to be followed, they are written, they are delineated over a three-page document, and that means that in order for an appraisal to be utilized and finalized in a file, per se, like in this particular case, there's a file on this within CRA, a lot of documents in there, who's responsible for signing off to make sure that those procedures were actually followed?
The Deputy Director of Real Estate.
Okay. Which is much more involved than it was several years ago or before February of last year?
That position was involved, but it was a different procedure.
No, I'm talking about the three pages. The three pages that we have effective February of 2010 are much more involved, and there's more checks and balances today than there were before then.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And thank you very much, Mr. Cardis. At this time, I'm going to open up for public comment, if it's all right. We've got it right here. We'll go to Van Nuys City Hall. Mr. Patel, please. Mr. Patel, followed by Mr. Nightingale.
Thank you. Hard questions. Are we asking the hard questions? This is a bunch of BS, I'm sorry to say.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nightingale, please.
Yeah, the paper that we read here is that, you know, you bought it for one price, then you're going to turn around and sell it supposedly to another price, and then the city's going to lose some money here, and then there's a payoff to the hamburger place. Where does all this come about? I mean, nothing's been said or any information, except for what we're reading here, and it sounds like there's too many loopholes in here, but it's for a multimillion-dollar job, it's not that much money, and I don't see what the, why it isn't taken care of. I mean, you're looking at a couple hundred thousand dollars here, but it's a multimillion-dollar job. I mean, where's the information? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Arnold Sacks, followed by Frank Defoe. Frank, you go just after Mr. Sacks, if you would. Second, you're second.
I'm second.
Mr. Sacks is first.
Thank you again, Arnold Sacks. Sale of property, CRA property. So just out of curiosity, with the stadium that's being proposed, why isn't that property being sold? Mr. President, you mentioned that you wanted to make sure there was checks and balances so that property can't change hands, that the city owns the property. Well, according to this item right here on the agenda, this is CRA-owned property at 1601 North Vine Street. CRA doesn't fall under the city's financial policies. So how can you be sure that the CRA doesn't have a transfer of city property when the city doesn't own the property? It just doesn't make sense. More checks and balances, less open transparency. Thank you.
Frank Defoe.
Good morning, Frank Defoe, and congratulations to all of those who were successful yesterday. I've been playing a very interesting role between the Ricardo Montalban Theater, we you will hear from shortly, and the property, the developers of 1601 Vine. And I am personally a developer of some repute, having developed five city blocks in La Mesa just outside of San Diego, so I'm quite familiar with redevelopment and how the funds flow back. One of the things I'd like to bring is to the council here is the synergism between 1601 Vine, this beautiful new office building, and the Ricardo Montalban Theater is very important. As you mentioned, Mr. Garcetti, that we need this property, this new office space, but I think we need it even more than just if it was at a different location because it's next door to the Montalban. We've talked with the Genzler Architects about having a skybridge from the upper floors of the new office building to the new sports court on top of the Montalban, and the new reception area that's going in there, which Gil Smith will talk more about. But I believe the synergism of that at Hollywood and Vine will be very important to the success of the Montalban and to the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Oxley, followed by Frederick Piedmont Brown.
Well, thank you, Mr. President, and congratulations. Look forward to working with you for a couple more years.
Thank you very much. Four years.
And distinguished council members. My name's Tom Oxley, I'm president of the L.A. Orange County Building and Construction Trades and the 150,000 members that it represents, many who were here earlier, I don't know where they went. But I'm here to speak on this project. Early in this, we met with the developer and came to an agreement on project labor agreement, which will create 400 union jobs. With unemployment in the building and construction trades at over 40%, these are much-needed jobs. This will also benefit the area of Hollywood and be an asset to the community there, and we just ask for your support to move this forward, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Tom. Mr. Brown.
Mr. President, council members, my name's Frederick Piedmont Brown, the president of the ironworkers local 433 Los Angeles. We're in great need of jobs, we support this project, we also support any redevelopment in Hollywood, in the area of Los Angeles, the greater city. Thank you very much.
From the great Hollywood Chamber of Commerce, Nahol Saheney.
Good morning, council members. On behalf of the Hollywood Chamber, I'm here to show our strong support of the 1601 Vine Street project. The project will provide Hollywood with an eight-story LEED-certified Class A office building containing approximately 108 square thousand feet of leasable space. As you know, there's a real need for new office space to be built in Hollywood. We have very few Class A office buildings and have lost a lot of space due to conversions to residential. In fact, there's not been a new office building erected in the last 30 years, with the exception of the Technicolor Building, which was fully occupied by that firm. The Chamber is committed to keeping Hollywood as the entertainment capital of the world. If we expect to attract new entertainment companies, we simply must build the space. As you know, Live Nation recently just moved 400 jobs from Beverly Hills to Hollywood Boulevard, showing that there is potential to attract more entertainment firms if we provide them with the space. If Hollywood is going to remain a vibrant commercial center, new office space is essential. The Chamber strongly encourages you to approve this project and help us bring much-needed jobs to Hollywood.
Thank you. Jim McQuiston.
Jim McQuiston, I have no problem with building this building, but we do have to remember that only five people can work on projects in this then, because our building code says that it has to be done in industrial area if you have over five workers, and otherwise it's restricted.
Thank you very much, Mr. McQuiston. Hal Katsky, is that correct?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm Hal Katerski, I'm the developer of the project, and I'm happy to introduce 1601 North Vine. It's a project that we've been working on for over four years. It's one that we have developed, that we have in the development stage, invested over $4 million in, and one that we're very proud. It's a project that will go up eight stories, and it will go down five stories, and I think this is important because it will provide additional parking, which is needed in Hollywood, that can be used by the various clubs and other entertainment facilities on weekends and evenings. This will be a green building, it'll be gold leads, and we will spend approximately $60 million on its construction. There will be approximately 400 construction jobs that will last for about two years, and as we all know, 400 construction jobs will translate into about 1100 or 1200 other jobs for the local area. When the building is completed, it will be occupied by almost 500 people as their permanent workplace. All of our contractors and subcontractors are local, it's all union, as we develop, all our projects are all union. We have signed a project labor agreement. We have signed a project labor agreement, and we look forward to going forward. From the city's standpoint, the city will realize in excess of $32 million in benefits over the next 10 years in terms of property taxes, license and fees, and business licenses and sales tax. This is a shovel-ready project. It's ready to go. We look forward to beginning it in the fall. We appreciate the support that we've had. We know that a Class A office building is needed in Hollywood, and this outstanding design by Gensler is one that we will all be very proud of. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. William Delvac. William Delvac.
Honorable council members, William Delvac, Varne Brewster, Gil Smith and Delvac on behalf of the applicant. We have been through a number of hearings. You've heard the questions that were asked. As developer and applicant, we shared the concerns that were expressed by the committee members. We believe that those were the right questions. We believe that they've been answered. It's our understanding that the CRA has provided answers in a PowerPoint and other documents. We too feel like this has been a process that's been very arduous. We think it's the right project at the right time, and we urge the council, regardless of how we got here, let's keep our eye on where we should go. And where we should go is to create jobs, keep the entertainment industry in Hollywood, and support a project that will further complete the redevelopment effort in this part of Hollywood. We urge your approval of the HCD committee report.
Thank you very much. John, 851-6666, Tronsen.
Thanks for the promotion. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. My name is John Tronsen. I am one of the owners of Ramsey Schilling Commercial Real Estate. We're a 53-year-old commercial real estate firm that is located in Hollywood. I have been solely focused in my real estate career for the last 20 years in this market. I'm here to speak in support of this project, and before I talk about the project specifically, I'd like to just look back. When I first came to the market, the area was truly blighted. There was no quality retail in Hollywood. The housing product was dated and rundown, and through the financial subsidies of the CRA and their leadership, we were able to dramatically rejuvenate the retail through the Hollywood Highland Project and the Cinerama Dome Project and the Holly West Project. And the residential product has been completely rejuvenated as well, with 1,200 new high-end residential units that were put online just last year. We recently have Trader Joe's and Urban Outfitters. And what the CRA has done for retail and done for housing, the last piece to the puzzle, in my opinion, as a real estate professional, is the office market. We have a huge need for new office space to attract the cream of the crop tenants, and this project is a first-tier, gold-lead-certified, Gensler-designed masterpiece. And I am very confident, when it is built, it will rent at rental rates that nobody has seen before and thereby give private developers a comfort level that they can build and profit by doing it without any assistance. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Gil Smith, is that correct?
Good morning, council members, and thank you for my opportunity to speak to you today. I listened to Mr. Garcetti's eloquent summation of where this council is with his project. The Ricardo Montalban Foundation, of which I'm chair, supports the 1601 project. We had discussions with the developers nearly three and a half years ago and came to a contractual agreement if they were to put the shovel to the ground. Our concerns were, at that time, our own lifeblood, to have programming and to be a part of this regeneration of the Hollywood sector. We've seen the W come online. We've seen the legacy apartments, which our theater is using. We are now participating in public events, supporting harmony.org, the Hollywood Chamber of Commerce. And with this additional office structure and with new entertainment blood coming in, we see that the use of our theater, not only for the sit-down plays and for the entertainment side, but will be more able to be a community member and make those donations because we are a 501(c)(3). Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Let's talk about Mr. Garcetti to close.
Thank you. And forgive me if it's not a quick close. There's three things I still need to do here, and I'll just keep pressing my button. Let me know if anybody else is on there, otherwise I'll keep going. Thank you. Thank you to the public for their comments. Thank you both for those who are in favor of moving the project forward and those who have been skeptics as to process, because I've been alongside with you. Mr. Cardness pointed out, for folks who are saying that tough questions aren't being asked, maybe some people missed their committee meetings, but we've had over two hours. In fact, when public questions have been raised by members of the public, council members have asked those exact same questions. They put them on the record. We've had the developer come forward and clarify questions that people had out there. There's been a lot of things conflated together. One thing that is clear to me, though, is that we have absolutely been scrubbing this from beginning to end, and I'm not yet done today. The two things I'd like to do is talk about the process that we've had here in assessing this, and then the process that happened before this in the CRA, and then kind of close on what the merits are here. As I mentioned, the process that we've had have been multiple meetings, hours of open meetings where we've asked the questions. Let me go through some of the different questions that have been raised. Would this really produce the jobs? Is this funded? Criticisms, whether rightfully or wrongfully, and I know Mr. Katerski addressed these questions, but whether Mr. Katerski was bankrupt, which I know you took some personal umbrage at and I think corrected. The same folks, in fact, I believe, who are funding this, developers, for those who are uninitiated, aren't the ones who do the funding, they have funders behind it, are the same ones involved with the project that others have questioned. So if they hated that one so much, it would be a little confusing to me why they would be funding you this time, and I think that's evidence that the funding that is behind this is legitimate. Whether or not, in the past, this developer has done projects that have taken jobs away from Los Angeles to New Mexico, where there have been projects to have entertainment jobs there. To me, the market moves wherever it is most business-friendly. I'm not going to beat up Yahoo and say, "I'm never going to do business with Yahoo because we failed to get them downtown and they went to Burbank." I'm going to actually want to get with somebody who knows how to bring jobs here. And I believe this developer has a proven track record of getting those jobs in the entertainment industry. It's time to return them to Hollywood instead of shipping them off elsewhere. That doesn't, in my mind, disqualify somebody. We've looked at the protections that we have in place. The CRA, the people will own this piece of land, and I do want to say to the developer, we need to make sure this gets funded and done. If it doesn't, this comes back to us and we will start that process over again. That is our protection and our ultimate insurance policy. But we also know millions of dollars have been put into the design, into the entitlement of this. That doesn't just move to the next developer if this one falls through. The city is out that money in some ways that we have put in while we are awaiting what happens there. So that's what we've done on the process, hearing after hearing. Thank you. I didn't personally lobby Mr. Cardness, Mr. Alakon, Mr. Wesson to either ask those questions or not ask those questions. I think they can confirm that. I actually stepped away from that to make sure that we could get to the bottom of what that process was, and those questions have all been answered to my satisfaction. In fact, the logic of there being something wrong here, which is that now we get to the process of what the CRA did, of two different appraisals, one lower than the other. If that gap in money somehow was supposed to be some sort of conspiracy, and I loved sitting over here next to Ms. Galanter alphabetically. She used to teach me many lessons when I was a first-year member of this council. She said, "The problem with most grand conspiracy theories is nobody's smart enough to actually pull them off." And she was humble in saying that, but so many things would have had to fall in place, and the logic would have had to make sense, which here it doesn't because the Omen's, and my friends, the Omen's, I think would confirm this, who owned this piece of land, hate the CRA so much over the years that they don't want to do business with the CRA. So they, two enemies, would have had to collude somehow to get a higher price than what the market value was. Now, I believe that the appraisal, the higher one that was done by C.B. Ellis, is a defensible appraisal. It's probably the right one in the end. But now, let's go to the process, and Mr. Hollis, if you can answer this for me. Somebody in the CRA did unbeknownst to my office, unbeknownst to the developer, unbeknownst to the public that was out there, have a second appraisal done. I don't know if they were asking for a second opinion. They wanted to do that on the side. They wanted to double down and figure out what the actual worth was. That appraisal, which might not have been done as well as the first one in looking at this and scrubbing it out, came in lower. So to the public perception, it seems like, wait, the city took CRA money and overpaid for this piece of land. So two questions. One, do you believe that there was an overpayment, that the C.B. Ellis appraisal is wrong? And two, how the heck did that happen?
Well, I'll address the first question first. I've read both appraisals. I am not an appraiser. I've been in the real estate business for a number of years. I believe the C.B. Richard appraisal is a fair, honest appraisal. That appraisal was not done for the redevelopment agency. That was done for the private lender on this project. And the private lender, an independent private lender, required that appraisal in order to loan on this project. So it was done in the private marketplace. It was provided to the agency at some point in time by the developer, but it was not done.
That's because the developer was buying directly from the private landowner at that point. There was not CRA involvement.
That is correct. The agency commissioned an appraisal, the $4 million appraisal, and to our best knowledge, the developer had no awareness that that appraisal existed.
Well, I certainly didn't as well, and I think that the folks that were working on this project didn't as well. So why did that happen? Have you looked in? Has there been enough of an investigation to find out? I mean, I've heard generalized answer, those folks have moved on, we're not sure. But I'm not satisfied with an agency that can't police itself, and I want to know that not only the process has been changed moving forward, which I appreciate, and you've put that forward, but it's also about looking back and holding people accountable.
We have interviewed, members of our organization have interviewed staff who were with the agency at the time, and they did not have a specific recollection of how this occurred. That's all I can tell you.
So we couldn't go to the folks that do the appraisal and say, "By the way, who called you?" I mean, it doesn't just happen out of thin air.
No, no. I'm sorry. It was clear that our appraisal was ordered by our appraisal people. There was no question that we ordered an appraisal. That appraisal came in. That's we ordered that appraisal. There's no question about that.
So then, what broke down in terms of communicating that? Why did it take a Public Records Act request for me to find out that that appraisal had been done for the folks that were involved in that deal to say, "Oh, by the way, you know, when we pay this developer X amount, there might be a gap between what we internally do. Maybe we need a second one, or at least need to address that gap to make sure that we're not spending too much public money on this."
I believe that the appraisal that many of us did not know about was, in fact, the C.B. Richard Ellis appraisal. We knew about the agency appraisal. That appraisal, however, was not referenced when this item went to the board to acquire that property. The board report merely said this property is being acquired based upon an appraisal.
So did we pay the value of the lower appraisal, or did we pay the value?
We paid the value of the higher appraisal, the C.B. Richard Ellis appraisal.
But we didn't know that it existed?
I'm saying, we, people who have been looking into this who were not there, did not know that appraisal existed until very late in the process. Now, what should have been done, what our procedures required, was that if you use an outside appraisal, that appraisal should have been reviewed by an appraiser or appraisal expert within the agency, by the agency. There's no evidence that that review occurred, and that's where the system broke down, was if we were going to use that C.B. Richard appraisal, which was permissible under our procedures at the time, it was only permissible if we conducted a professional, third-party review of that appraisal, and there's no evidence that that occurred.
So is there any consequence besides changing policy that has occurred from this inside the agency?
I can't say that there's consequences, no.
So there's not been a report of saying, "Who didn't do what you believe should have been policy? This was just kind of unintended." How would you describe what this was? I mean, because obviously, the conspiracy theory is there's something wrong here. I've looked and scrubbed this. I can't find that dark conspiracy that actually leads to something corrupt. What I can find is a lot of incompetence, and something that is, that doesn't serve the policymakers, gives the public perception. We just debated community redevelopment agency here yesterday, as you know. And I know you're on the receiving end of this today and appreciate the work you're doing, but I still need to express this. This is why people don't trust sometimes. These are very complicated deals. Land use is complicated to begin with, as you know from your experience. And so when we can't get this right and scrub it exactly right, people say, "Something doesn't smell right." Now, I've tried to keep these two things separate today because we have to change that system, and that's different from whether this development should move forward. Some have conflated that, and I think wrongfully. And I can make that case, as I have here publicly today, and I'll do that in private meetings, and I'll talk to people over and over again as to why this has the merits to move forward and should. But I also want to make sure that we don't just change the systems, but that we hold people accountable. When we go into closed session on a trip and fall, we don't just say, "Let's do the payout." We now, for the last eight years, because this council demanded it, have the general manager or departmental rep say, "What are you doing to make sure that we fix those sidewalks or that we don't come back and have another million dollars we're paying out next year?" I want to know, what are we doing besides changing that policy? Who is held accountable for that happening?
Councilman, all I can say is if that, if those employees responsible were with the agency today, there would have been, we would have followed procedures that would have held them accountable. I don't know how to do that for folks who are not with us in the organization.
I appreciate that. You don't have formal authority over these people who have moved on, but I think that the light of day needs to be shined on it. I think people are adults and they can take the consequence of that. They can defend themselves if there's something that they say is defensible. But I would like to see some sort of further report. You don't have an inspector general in the CRA. We can't ask the city attorney who actually represents you guys to look into it as well. I don't believe there's something criminal that went on here, but I do believe there's something extremely incompetent and something that undermines the faith that people have. So I would like to have a further report, knowing actually what happened, who did what, when, where, why. Let's solve that while we're not holding jobs hostage, while we're not holding this vacant lot hostage, and holding the community hostage, because there are great things that we can do, and I think we need to move this forward.
Yes, sir. We will do that.
Can you do that? Thank you. With that, folks, on the last piece, the merits, I'll be brief. I think we've made the case here today as to why this is an important piece. If you look, 10 years ago, there was a strip mall that had been knocked down in the corner of Sunset and Vine. There was the Broadway Building, the Taft Building, and there was a bank building. I think it might still have been Home. It's gone from Home to Washington Mutual to Chase. Everything else on this, from south of Hollywood Boulevard, north of Sunset, was vacant. One of the most vibrant two blocks that Hollywood, that the city has ever had, that used to generate jobs and excitement and all this stuff, were vacant. Now you look at it, we only have, if this project gets done, one parcel left. There have been four catalytic projects that have moved forward. The Sunset and Vine project, which preserves some of that old CBS Studios site there and the old Schwab sign that they have. The Hollywood and Vine project that was done around the Taft Building. A revitalization of the Broadway Building brought about through the adaptive reuse ordinance that we saw help downtown and come about. Our own parking lot next to the Montalban, the Montalban revitalized, and this. It would leave just that lot where the first full-length motion picture was ever filmed, just north of what the Chase Bank Building is now, which has been entitled and which I know folks are looking at investing and hopefully getting back on track to have a grocery store there and some housing. When we do that, we will have a corridor that is completely filled in. This is something that will be a huge engine, not just for Hollywood. This is not Hollywood for Hollywood's sake. This is Hollywood for Los Angeles' sake. This is making sure that we have those jobs, those white-collar, non-polluting jobs that are part of the entertainment industry, and that we have a tourist destination that people can be proud of, whether they live two blocks away or whether they live 1,000 miles away. And for the workers that are looking to do something, this means jobs right now, and I believe over 500 permanent jobs after those construction workers finish up on that last day. For those reasons, let's not hold the project and the community hostage for what was the mistake made early on. And let's not also make the sloppiness of conflating two things to say there's some conspiracy there that doesn't exist. But we do have to clean up that system. I think the agency has taken one positive step, but I eagerly look forward to that report so we can finally put a cap on this and to the satisfaction of the public eye, make sure this absolutely never happens again. I ask for your support.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti, for your leadership to this in well in Hollywood. There's no other speakers on the queue. Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, for your question, you have item five as amended by amending motion 5A. Garcetti, Wesson, before you.
5A it is, circulated. No other speakers on the queue. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes, one no.
Thank you very much. And now, we're going to take a public comment. Public comment, Daniel Garcia, Doris Raymond, Violet Peters. Public comment, Daniel Garcia. Thank you, Daniel. Doris Raymond. Mr. Garcia.
Thank you. Today, I want to suggest to the Congress, hey, give me a, give me a preparation about voting. Yeah, today I voted, and in very proud I voted. Yeah, today I voted, and in very power I voted, but the situation, the situation is that more people who vote are in the 10 to 12 percent of the population here in L.A. meaning, meaning that the whole city council members are a simple few of people here. It's amazing, it's amazing. You are, you are hit by a few of people, a few of people that can, that can vote. I hear my population, in deal, people who want to vote, and many people who don't want to vote, encouraging with a big, with a big ticket, encouraging with a free coffee per uh, per ticket. Or have a program, or have a program, or have a program that if you have a, if you have a cup of coffee, I mean, if you vote, you can have a cup of coffee with a ticket of voting. That's all my population. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Doris Raymond.
Hi, thank you. You know, you were all talking about jobs, 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 and I'm actually approaching this more from a grassroots basis. I'm here because of some serious parking issues, specifically on the La Brea corridor between Third and Fourth Streets. I'm the owner of a vintage boutique called The Way We Wore, and I've been at that location for seven years. When I opened, I had three employees, and now I have seven, with 5,000 square feet and only two parking spaces in the back. About two years ago, I was notified of a neighborhood hearing regarding parking, and I attended that meeting, and also followed up with a questionnaire. I expressed my concern about any changes for parking in the neighborhood, and asked for no restrictions until 7:00 PM or 8:00 PM, because of the obvious loss of space during the 4:00 to 7:00 PM toe-away times on La Brea. On that same questionnaire, I requested notification when and if any proposed changes or any additional meetings. Several months later, I found out that the two-hour no-parking signs had been posted on Fourth Street and on Sycamore, and I only found out because my staff got tickets on the first day that it was posted. The ultimate and absolute power of the resident petition was not brought to my attention. So, all these changes were made, and now, what's happening is, I'm part of the neighborhood as well, and there's been no notification or warning. My only consolation was, there was three parking meters on Fourth Street at La Brea, plus on the west side of Sycamore between Fourth and Sixth Street. There were no, there was no signage at all, and it makes sense because there's no houses on that side of the street, right? So, that changed this past weekend, once again with no notification, no warning. Now, my staff has no place to park, my customers have no place to park, and I'm competing with three parking meters with the whole neighborhood. So, I'm constantly losing manpower every two hours because they have to move their cars. So, I'm asking for your help and assistance in helping me solve this problem.
Thank you very much, Ms. Raymond. We're going to ask Ms. White sir from office to meet you over at the ropes, and I'll talk to you later. Next, Ms. Peters.
My name is Viola Peters, and this is my mother, Ablene Wing, who has dementia. She attends the Partner in Care Daycare, Adult Daycare Program on Weston Adams, which is one of the six programs that is, that are scheduled to be closed on March 25th, and I'm here today to desperately request that you restore the funding. In closing the programs and displacing these vulnerable seniors, you are directly jeopardizing their health and safety. Before learning about the adult daycare program, I was forced to leave my mother at home by herself while I went to work. I have come home to find her on the floor because she has fallen. I have come home, the gas has been turned on on the stove, and other very dangerous situations. I am my mother's primary caregiver, and it is an impossible task for me to care for her by myself. I rely heavily on the support of the daycare center. I go, I get to go to work with peace of mind, knowing that my mother is safe and content and involved. My mother, Ablene Wing, was a community activist dedicating her life to the city of L.A., volunteering and serving and fighting for justice in this city. I am now here fighting for her health and safety. Please, restore the funds to keep the adult daycare programs open to ensure the safety of our very vulnerable citizens. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Deborah Jackson, Arnold Sachs, Leroy Phillips.
Hi, I'm Deborah Jackson, and I'm here, in the same case with Viola, on restoring the funding for the Adult Daycare Center. I'm her caregiver, and ever since she's been going in, she's been so vibrant and alive and everything like that, and I feel that if they close this thing down, it would detriment it to our health, and she probably will end up dying instead of surviving, so I would like to ask you to please restore the funding. Thank you.
Arnold Sachs, followed by Mr. Phillips.
Good afternoon, Arnold Sachs. Today's Daily Breeze has two items on it. L.A. poised to approve DWP reforms, except reforms occurred before they even voted. You know how the ratepayer advocate was moved from the C, the CAO's office to the controller's office, and now to the DMP's control. That's some bit of change in the ratepayer advocate right there. And then there's this picture. It's amazing how they foretell the future. You can see, City Hall packed like sardines to hear lohard councils discuss projects in Hollywood and in downtown L.A., delayed for time, 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 because of what? Well, because of the difficult procedures it takes to get building permits and all the permitting processes that occur in the city that is so business-friendly. And who sets up those policies, and who oversees those policies? The city council members. So, they create these difficult policies, and then, when they strike gold, it's like elementary. And by the way, thank you, Mr. President, 45 minutes to delay today's meeting for three members. It was obscene to allow...
Hey, Mr. Sachs, it was my fault because I had a problem in my neighborhood, so I personally apologize. Thank you for your comment.
Sir, three members are late, three members are here that weren't here for 45 minutes. So, I appreciate your concern, but what about the other two members? 45 minutes, a full house stayed for 45 minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Sachs. Very good, now, we're going to Van Nuys City Hall. Mr. Nightingale, Rick Nightingale.
Yeah, Rick Nightingale. Boy, I'll tell you, you turn around, it was a three-ring circus there yesterday, but now you, people that were around, you saw what the CRA, what they're all about. Even today, look what was going on. You know, the person couldn't give the right answers, and so far, they beat around the bush. I mean, um...
It's your family, your wife.
And then regarding the election, you people turn around and have a chance to change things in the horseshoe, same old, same old. I don't know, a lot of people don't watch Channel 35 to understand what's going on, to turn around and vote some of these people out, but you wonder why nothing changes in this place. And the situations that always go on and on and on. The city can't keep going on like this. Thank goodness that the CRA has backed up into a corner, and boy, they're trying to chew their way out, because every one of the council people is for it, because of all the money, but I mean, I had that list yesterday, that there was 15 pages, roughly 300 jobs. Do you know how much 300 jobs and how many millions and billions of dollars that CRA has put out, and it took your taxpayers' money to put this thing up? What happened to free enterprise? That people turn around and businesses build things when they want them, and that stuff, that you have to bribe people with the CRA to come along, and they'll put the money up and so forth, and then all the kickbacks that turn around and happen. There was, I talked to a gentleman there, that to turn around, and he bid on a job, and he says, "Well, you don't belong to our little clique, so you're not going to get that job. You won't be able to buy that, because we have a certain amount of people that we deal with, and that stuff, and you will not get it." I mean, this is the situation that is going on with this city over and over and over again, and like, if you're not with the good old boys, you're not going to survive. So, I mean, what are you people going to do? I mean, nobody's doing a darn thing about it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nightingale. Mr. Patel, please, followed by Mr. Maraz.
Thank you. Congratulations to the incumbents for winning. We're not disheartened. Stephen Box is not going to stop showing up. We're not going to stop looking over your shoulders. Zuma Dog is not going to quiet down. John Walsh has continued, and the rest of us will continue to hopefully have a say in this. Now, 1.6 million, right, 1,644,647 registered voters, 1,454,005 did not cast a vote. It's amazing, right? Cardinals spent something like $50 a vote. $50 a vote, that's Meg Whitman money. We're not discouraged over here in the neighborhood council system, because we are growing, we are learning, we are realizing that each of us does make a difference. We are going to continue to breathe down your throats about 1601 North Vine. Now, that whole thing, I was thrown off because I was the first one speaking. I have so much to say on this. It's not that I think it's a conspiracy, it's that when you start asking those hard questions, you literally had the man squirming. Thank you. I appreciate that. He was squirming. It was, I enjoyed it. There's a smile on my face because of that. We need to make more of these people squirm, and sometimes councilmen need to squirm, because they're not being asked the hard questions. But, um, these questions, you know what they, it's not a conspiracy, I'm not that part sometimes, not, not right now, but these questions unearth a conflict of interest, right? When the CRA is the only one hiring the appraisal company, and then they benefit from that, or when they set the tax equi, what is it, the tax equity funding, the tax increment funding, they set that, and then they are poised to benefit from whatever that sets. That's a conflict of interest. There's so many conflicts of interest in this city. Unfortunately, the voters don't realize it. Unfortunately, the voters don't vote. But we are here. We are going to stay here. We're going to continue to pay attention, and we're growing. We're not disheartened. Ron Kay put out a nice little piece today. I suggest you read it. Struggling.
Mr. Maraz, candidate of Maraz.
Good afternoon, City Council. To the winners, here we are the day after. Congratulations. I hope you'll keep your promise and hold yourselves accountable. The great Reverend Martin Luther King once said that if a man or a woman hasn't discovered something that he or she will die for, he or she isn't fit to live. So, I hope that you'll live to serve your communities. To the challengers, keep your heads up. It's not over. If you believe in yourself, there's only 100, 1,460 days till the next election, so if you truly believe in yourselves, don't get down, as long as your health is up, and you can get out there and campaign and promote yourself, please, do it. We need, we need new leadership. I'm especially thrilled about the outcome in the 8th District, Mr. Parks. We look forward to seeing you there. We couldn't afford to give that seat up to the Department of Water and Power, and I want to thank Ms. Perry for supporting you. I look forward to her entry to the race, the mayor's race in a year and a half is going to be an exciting one. And to the people of this great city, we thank you for approving INJ with over 80%. Hopefully, now, we can start to take a look at the waste, fraud, and abuse that takes place at the Department of Water and Power, that we can eliminate the moneybags that go out to influence the, the outcome of what takes place in this great city. And we need to take a look at the jobs. We heard about jobs all day long today, and over at DWP, where are the jobs going to? We need to check the zip codes for the last 2,000 people that have been hired at the Department of Water and Power. Also, I'm going to ask for the Public Records Act. We are in a gas crisis, and the department has to stop sending their people from Hope Street over to Caesar Chavez to pick up their burritos. If you take that run every day, and you add the amount of waste of gas, we're losing a lot of gas. So, Mr. President, council members, I've said it once before, I'm willing to drop my suit against the city. If they'll take the lie detector test, I'll throw it on the table again. Lie detector test, let's see who wins. Thank you, Mr. President.
Walter Patel, Richard Robinson, Leroy Phillips, or Larry Phillips, excuse me.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I didn't get to say something about the last item having to do with Molly's Burger. I over there looked at the map, but I wanted to say something as far as the anxiety the city has with tearing down a lot of property, including the Sixth Street Bridge, which is in my district, the 14th District, and of course, the Ford Hotel, and other properties. I think the city should be very suspicious about people who want to hurry up and tear down places that have been well-known for a while. It's kind of like, it's kind of like the tree and the stone. The tree, when a tree is trying to put its root down, and it runs up against a stone, it can't put its root through the stone, and no matter how hard it tries, it can't go through the stone, and that darn thing is in the way, so what the tree has to do is go around the stone and get past it. And what that does, in effect, is it helps not only to anchor the tree, the stone helps to anchor the tree, but when the tree's root crooks around like that, it doubly anchors the tree and actually helps the tree. So, when you people want to tear down these landmarks and these supposedly stupid little places, what you do is you ruin the property that comes there afterwards, and ruin an opportunity for the, the new building to anchor itself. If, like Molly's Burger, were incorporated into the design of the new building, that would add credibility to the design of the building, but when you don't do something like that, it ends up causing problems, and where places there are no, they want to hurry up and give, it just creates more problems, and it's not a good idea to hurry up.
Thank you very much, Richard Robinson.
Mr. President, members, Richard Robinson. The Christian Science Church at Hollywood and La Brea, in your honor's district, was well on its way towards revival, when its membership was devastated by homophobia. Sir, God is not homophobic. Speaker of the House Representative Boehner is incorrect in his opposition to President Obama's determination to defend gay marriage. If there's anything that can protect marriage, defend marriage, it is the right of gay and lesbian lovers to marry. Sex is sacred. It's a gift of God. We live under a separate dispensation. The Old Testament, in many respects, the Old Testament is not to be applied 2,000 years later to today's life. The false dependencies of today's marriages are causing most marriages to fail. Me, Kazan, you, Jane, or me, Jane, you, Kazan. So, for all you men that want to stay at home, take care of kids, God bless you. Thank you.
Mr. Phillips, thank you very much, followed by Ms. Williams.
Okay. Larry Phillips, good morning, City Council. Congratulations to you on your victory, and I did vote yesterday. I'm present here today to represent my 85-year-old mother, my actually mother-in-law, who has dementia and early stages of Alzheimer's. We received devastating news... We received devastating news two weeks ago that her center located on Adams and West Boulevard will be closing March 25th. For these 25 members, it would be a tragedy for their family members not to have a place for them to attend at this stage of their life. Please help us, you in the cyber world, video world, wherever you are, please help us to get the funds restored for adult daycare. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Williams.
Hi, hi, hi. My name is Verlinda, I'm here on behalf of my mom. We need you guys' help for the Adult Day program. My mother attends the same place that these lovely people do, and we're kind of on our second go-around with budget cuts. She was at a center on Slauson, and they closed that, and now they're threatening to close the other one. I am what you call the sandwich generation, I have children at home, and I'm trying to care for my mother who has dementia. She's so happy, you hear her laughing? She's happy because she goes to that center. They help her out and helped me out tremendously. We're kind of in a crisis mode because they gave us a month and said it's closing. So we need whatever funding it is that provides for the seniors, our lovely seniors, we need that money back. So whatever you can do, when the vote comes, just say yes. We need your help. Thank you very much.
Mr. Najanian, please. Thank you very much.
Respectable City Council members, dear fellow Angelinos, my name is Armin Akmujian. Actually, I used to be a liberal, writing a candidate for District 8. So far, I came, yesterday I've been watching those elections, you know, on the state of the city view, and actually, about only 10% of registered voters actually, very low votes churned out, it was. And actually, I believe that it would better if more voters came to vote. And I want to talk today about my own plight, you know. Actually, I'm an emergency, you know, painter, you know, and I have about 16 acrylic and oil paintings. I've been actually sending requests, you know, for exhibition to many Adgales in Los Angeles area, in Grand Sound, California area, but nowhere well. I mean, none of them wanted to exhibit me, someone asking me where I'm coming from. I told them I come from Russia, so I haven't seen a negative kind of responses. Well, actually, what can I say? I offer all those Angelinos, Los Angeles residents, and everyone in this chamber, you know, to come to see my paintings, come to my home, 29501 Bureau Place in Los Angeles area, and see my painting and buy some of them, I sell them a suitable price, you know, very cheap. And it's all acrylic painters, actually, my art is neo-realist, and I would like to offer those paintings, you know, to anybody who likes art, you know, and would appreciate my offer. And also, I want to talk about those Grant Hotel, been reconstructed by CRA. It actually, I believe, was end users will be poor indigent Angelinos who will receive those right to live there, and I propose to make this hotel into residential property.
Thank you very much. That completes our public comment today. Well, thank everybody for the public comment. Now, Mr. Clerk, let's reconsider item six, is that used to judge you?
Very good, sir. First, that would require a vote amongst the members to reconsider.
Vote for reconsideration. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, so we reconsider it? We do have some public comment cards?
Yes, also for clarification there, motion 6A, motion Reyes, excuse me, Wesson for Reyes, seconded by Councilmember Garcetti, has been circulated and distributed to the members.
So it has been distributed?
Yes, sir.
All right, so I'm going to take public comment right now?
Yes, sir.
All right, for the San Fernando Valley, Mr. Patel.
I did take the bus here, the orange line. San Fernando Valley is underserved by public transportation, so when you're giving measure R money to the CRA with their myriads of conflicts of interest, which sometimes some people conflate, as Councilmember Garcetti said, with conspiracies this way and that way, but that's just money that doesn't seem to be going anywhere. I'm actually doing a master's program now at CSUN focusing on public transportation. It's an interdisciplinary, so I can basically choose what classes I take. You guys may or may not know, CSUN's geography department is one of the best in the nation, so I'm taking some geography classes, some urban planning. We have different things going on. There's an MTA transportation center being put on the campus. We've gotten some money, it's going to be three bus-based. We're looking to continue to develop. Again, CSUN's known as a commuter school, people come from all around, we've done some commuter practices surveys, we're looking to start getting some grants. We would love to work with the city because, so I know sometimes I come off as argumentative or hard-headed or combative or whatever you want to call it, but there's money to be had, and CSUN can get it with the help of the city in terms of, you know, Federal Transit Authority and, you know, grants.gov. You type in transportation and pages and pages come up, but we need to build that kind of, that linkage, because a lot of the times, if you have a university plus LA DOT, or plus MTA, or plus somebody, you know, neighborhood councils, you can get a, you have a real chance of getting a lot of that grant money. So CSUN has a transportation working group. Rather than giving some of that money to the CRA, you need to, I mean, you probably pay attention more to UCLA and USC, but again, San Fernando Valley is underserved by public transportation. I would have gotten out there to downtown, but it takes too damn long. So I would like to connect some of those things. Again, the transportation working group at CSUN has architects, has professors. I'm basically a leg worker over there, and you know I'm a little bit sharp, so I can handle some of those other things that are going on. We would love to work with you on that front, getting money into the city for public transportation, which is an important issue.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Now, I'd like to welcome Mr. Arnold Sachs.
Thank you. The CRA is going to get money from the Bureau of Street Services and the LA DOT to do public transportation projects. Before the governor's budget program and the discovery that the CRA had $930 million, this would never made it, that never made it anywhere. Now the CRA is getting money from the LA DOT and BLSS, it's like laundering money here. Say what it is. Why is the CRA getting involved in transportation projects? The CRA has commitments with the DOT to pay for traffic surveys. Two items on the agenda, previous, previous agenda items, and now the CRA is getting money back from them. CRA is paying them, CRA is getting money from them. It's ridiculous.
Thank you very much. That completes public comment. Mr. Clerk, we have no speakers on the queue, so let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Thank you very much. And now at 50 and 51, we want to take those up right now, we do have some comment.
Sir, I believe you'd like to take 51 and 52.
Very well, Mr. Clerk, we will take it right now. Mr. Sachs, for 51, please, public comment. You want to pass? 51 you want to pass? Thank you very much, Mr. Sachs. Play one card on that, and let's call our commissioners to the table. This is for the Metropolitan Water District, which is an important agency that Mahalan and his members of that time put together to bring water to the pueblo. Like to call on Jan Perry as Chair of Committee, just to give us an opening intro.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I thank you to both gentlemen, and I know your files are complete and your review is complete. I know Mr. Murray better, so I'd just like to reflect for a quick moment about his many accomplishments, I've worked with him for many years, and he has done the city a great service by heightening the profile, the need to diversify our business base and to bring new entrepreneurs and to mentor them, to teach them, and also to, to help them integrate into larger business settings and to create relationships that did not exist before, and he's brought that same intelligence and that same experience to the Metropolitan Water District, and I think that he will represent our interests very, very well and quite capably. So I recommend that we do an I vote on both of the candidates here before us today.
Thank you very much, Ms. Perry. Mr. Murray, would you like to say just a little something, too?
Well, thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. I have known and worked with a number of you over the long years. My colleagues and I are honored to be given this opportunity to serve, and I just want to let you know that your delegation on the Metropolitan Water District, you know Dave Fleming, he's the Vice Chair of the Business and Agriculture Committee at Metropolitan. Our colleague Jesus Quinones is the immediate past Chair of the Legal and Insurance Committee and is still its Vice Chair. My colleague Aaron Grunfeld is the Chairman of the Business and Finance Committee of the Met, and I'm Vice Chairman of the Board and Chairman of the Organization Personnel and Technology Committee. So I just want to let you know that the City of Los Angeles is well-represented there, and we're pleased to continue in our work on behalf of the people of the City of Los Angeles.
Thank you. Mr. Grunfeld, would you like to make a few comments?
I think that my colleague John Murray says it all, but as a small postscript and as a longtime resident of Hancock Park, I have certainly witnessed firsthand your leadership and the kind of role that you played in our community, and I wanted to add my congratulations on your reelection.
Oh, thank you very much, I appreciate that, and I also appreciate Mr. Murray, who was a former Chief of Staff for then-Councilman Farrell and a great member. Both of you, the MWD is a very important agency, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
There's no speakers on the queue, so Mr. Clerk, would you like to say something? Let me call, there is a speaker on the queue, and he's tall and he's standing up.
Yeah, just, I know we move so quickly around here. The Metropolitan Water District obviously is the over-umbrella for all of us in Southern California. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And our big issue historically has been the delta, number one, and number two, the farming, number two. When it came to farming, part of the concern historically has been wasting water that some farmers do, or growing cotton where it belongs in a wet belt. And our issues, which are we, drinking and living, are significant realities of the need for water to be brought in. How do we feel about how it's being worked out with both the delta and with the agricultural interests? Because the water wars, we don't want again, but we would like to be secure that Southern California, in a desert land, will have adequate water.
Thank you, Councilman Rosenthal. With regard to the delta, as you know, there was an historic legislative package passed last year, although a decision was made in November not to put the measure on the ballot with regard to the bond funding for that, I suspect that it will be back again in 2012. There's a lot of ongoing continuing work in the delta, including a number of lawsuits having to do with stressors, one of them being litigation currently involving the Sacramento Regional Sanitation District because of the amount of effluent that they were dumping into the San Joaquin Sacramento River that was having an impact on the fish, that was one of the contributors towards Judge Wanger's decision to restrict the water deliveries to Southern California. There's a lot happening on that. With regard to the farming, there are a number of programs, and my colleague is familiar, of course, with a number of them, to follow farmland and to engage in other activities that would free up water that was being used for farming to make it available for the dense population in Southern California, and we will continue to work on that. This year has been a good year as far as trying to reestablish storage. When we first came on the board, it was estimated that in the event of a total failure of the levees in the Bay Delta, we had about three years of water in storage. Over the dry years that we've experienced, at one point it was down to as little as six months. This year now, as a result of the wet conditions, it's allowing us to fill up the reservoirs again, but that's going to continue to be an ongoing, in perpetuity kind of an issue, and working with the farmers, in particular in the Central Valley, is a key part of that.
I appreciate that, because one day I knew of a very wealthy man who bought water rights just for the water rights, and the profit he made on it, which I thought was obscene considering it was really going after us. Are we looking into those kinds of issues?
We look into all those issues that have to do with bringing water to Southern California. This is where the population is, over 20 million ratepayers in Southern California.
Yeah, and the last question is about conservation. We've come a long way in conservation, and what are your visions going forward?
Well, I want to particularly commend this council, the mayor, but particularly the people of the City of Los Angeles. LA leads in conserving somewhere between 15 and 17% and growing and doing better. This delegation had to fight last year to keep our budget for conservation there at Met. There are some that don't believe we should be investing as much in conservation. Conserved water is some of the most cost-effective water that we get, and you have our commitment to continue to fight to keep conservation dollars and to continue to look afresh at how we can most effectively use conservation to the benefit of the people of Southern California. Absolutely.
We really appreciate that, and I know my community in Mar Vista, part of my west side, has taken major strides in going to the kind of vegetation we should be growing, get rid of the green grass. I know that we all love our green grass, but there are more native plants that would obviously use less water, and a lot of folks are moving in that direction.
Absolutely, and thank you for your leadership on the issue.
Yeah, well, thank you both very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosenthal. No other speakers on the queue. Mr. Sachs, thank you for your note and file on your card. We're going to call, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay. Matter approved. Thank you both for your service to the great Metropolitan Water District.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We're going to item number 19 right now, item 19. Mr. Rosenthal called item 19 special, there's no cards.
Mr. President, for clarification, there has been an amending motion, motion 19A, that has been circulated for your members.
I might not need to say Mr. Rosenthal, so there's no speakers on the queue, so let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Matter approved. Next item. Item 27.
Item 27 was called special for cards, sir.
We have some special cards here for Mr. Sachs.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon. Arnold Sachs. I'm just bringing to mind here two items in the newspaper recently. One is from Sunday, March 6th, this commentary by Thomas Elias, "Have utilities sold California the wrong kind of solar?" He goes on to talk about solar projects that don't fit the bill for the state of California. But even more importantly is this news story by the LA Times regarding the construction debacle at the local colleges. Green plan scaled down sharply. Grand dream dim in glare of daylight. The fact that some of the solar projects advocated for at these schools are not capable of meeting the requirements, or the requirements for the projects are not feasible to provide at the schools. We know that that would never happen with this city's DWP, because under the auspices of the City Council and the open and transparent programs that you run, everything is on the up and up. People should be concerned, people should, I don't know, lock their doors, because the DWP and the council are going to act. We've heard budgets, the transfer that just occurred for the fiscal year, but what is the fiscal year? Because $21 million a month for six months takes us into the next fiscal year. It is amazing what passes for everyday occurrence in here, and the fact that so few questions are raised, A, by the public, and B, by the people who are supposed to write about it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sachs, for all your comment. That completes your comment today. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Very good. I'd like to have a special welcome to Yabda Hebrew Academy, great school in the 4th District. Give them a big hand and welcome to Los Angeles City Hall Standup. Stand up and be recognized by the city council. Thank you, teachers, the staff. Thank you. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
That brings us to item 39, called special for Councilmember Rosendahl.
Mr. Rosendahl?
Yes, just a quick comment, colleagues, and I want your support on this. As we are all connected in this world, and you know that we represent in this Los Angeles area over 140 countries, and we're probably the most multi-ethnic and multicultural city in the world. And this is a motion talking about Libya and what's going on there. And we're basically saying that we want our country to focus on it. The attacks on civilians have provoked international condemnation, spurred talk of foreign military intervention. And the International Criminal Court in The Hague has announced it will open a formal probe into the crimes against humanity committed by the regime. And I want us to just go on record, we're all connected on this planet, that the stuff has to stop, the full-fledged civil war has to stop. Gaddafi is sending warplanes to bomb rebellion areas and has ordered his own military forces to fire on Libyan citizens. This is something we have to take a strong position against, and I ask for our unanimous support. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. We have one public comment card from Basir Bajagi. I want to announce it correctly. All right, I believe they're gone at this time, so there's no speakers on the queue. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Very good. Next matter, item 28.
That brings us to item 28, called special for Councilmember Perry. Amending motion 28A has been circulated.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is just a technical amendment for the Osborne Apartments and the acceptance of $1 million from the Redevelopment Agency for the Gateway's project. Okay?
Yes.
Thank you.
And we have one card. Mr. Sax, note and file your card because of your time. Vanessa Lung, is Vanessa here?
Luna.
Forgive me, Vanessa Luna. Vanessa Luna, your pass on the card speaking. We have no speakers on the queue. Mr. Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Ten ayes, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Luna. Special one, please, special one.
Daniel, are you speaking to it?
Thank you, Mr. President. Since the posting of today's agenda, it has been determined that the CRA Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant contracts must be made effective to March 1st, 2010. Immediate action is required to take such action before the council recess. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substantive motion.
Thank you very, Ms. Perry. Let's open the roll on the findings first, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Ten ayes. Ms. Perry, please.
Mr. Chair, this motion comes at the request of the Redevelopment Agency and the Office of the Mayor. I'm doing this on behalf of CD14. As requested, Rushmore Cervantes and Jenna Guliger of the CRA are here to make sure that this motion is adopted without any issue if people have questions. The Redevelopment Agency, the ERA Committee, and the city council already approved these two expenditures, but there is a need to clarify the execution date for the contracts in order to spend the money. And there is a time concern as this ERA money has to be encumbered by the 31st of March. The Clean Tech Corridor Integrated Strategy was used to pay for a consultant as well as a presentation that they made, and that will be for $425,000. $2.8 million will go to establish a new citywide program that will assist large businesses with energy retrofits. So, and I appreciate the city attorney making the findings. And if you approve this item today, I ask that it go forthwith.
Thank you very much, Ms. Perry. There's no speakers on the queue. Mr. Sax, you're out of time. Thank you very much, Mr. Sax. He can speak on a side, but you're very special, Mr. Sax. Come up and speak on the special item. Thank you very much. I apologize.
Yes, thank you. This is the Clean Energy Corridor that the mayor has been proposing for years and years and years. Energy retrofitting, we had the DWP in here last year, towards the end of the year, discussing the fact that their energy retrofit program was running out of money for the public. And yet now they have $2.8 million for big business. So do they have money for the big business and not for the public? Or what happens with the public here? Came in here, we don't have, we have to abate our energy retrofit program. What is going on with DWP and why this flip-flop of policies? The public doesn't get money, but the big business does. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sax. There's no other speakers. Mr. Clerk, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Nobody on the queue? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Very good. Let's go to item number 15. You announce, Mr. Clerk, number 15?
That brings us to item number 15, called special for Councilmember Garcetti. If you could reopen the public hearing on this, please?
Okay, we're going to reopen the public hearing. Thank you, Mr. President. Could I have John Bowman followed by Daniel Wright? Thank you. Mr. Clerk, I'm sorry, Mr. City Attorney.
Just for clarification, this is a fair hearing matter requiring the council members heighten attention to the comments made by the speaker at the monitor.
Thank you very much, Mr. City Attorney. Mr. Bowman.
Good afternoon, members of the city council. My name is John Bowman. My firm represents Clarit Hollywood LLC, the developer of the Boulevard 6200 mixed-use project in Hollywood. The land use entitlements for this project were granted by the city council in 2007, and Clarit is hoping to break ground on this project in the very near future. The matter before you today is an appeal filed by a neighbor from the decision of the Board of Building and Safety Commissioners to conditionally approve a haulout for the export of dirt. The appellant contends essentially that the board erred and abused its discretion because the board didn't adopt specific measures that the appellant had requested. Our position, very simply, is that the board did not abuse its discretion because all of the appellant's concerns were adequately addressed by conditions of approval adopted by the board and by mitigation measures identified in the certified EIR. Now, the appeal before you was previously denied by the city council late last year, and it's come before you again today to remedy a procedural issue that had been raised by the appellant's counsel. Specifically, or excuse me, yesterday, the appellant's counsel submitted a letter to the city raising yet another procedural issue. Specifically, the appellant is now contending that it was denied due process because it didn't receive written notice of the Plum Committee's February 22nd meeting. This argument, in our view, is specious. The agenda for the Plum meeting was posted in accordance with the Brown Act requirements, and the city code requirements that apply to this proceeding don't require written notice to any party. Indeed, my client, the project developer, didn't receive written notice, and I learned of the meeting by simply monitoring the Plum Committee agendas. Moreover, the city council, not the Plum Committee, is the decision-maker in this case, and the city council has elected to hold a public hearing in this matter today. Notice of this hearing was properly given to all interested parties, and these actions more than satisfy the requirements.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman. That completes your time. Thank you so much. And I'd like to call on Daniel Wright.
Thank you, Mr. President. Daniel Wright of the Silverstein Law Firm on behalf of Margarita Allen, who will be affected by the Boulevard 6200 project, including the hauling of 220,000 cubic yards of soil from our clients, across the street from our client's home. On January 28, 2011, this council rescinded all approvals of the haulout and directed the clerk to remand the entire matter back to the Planning and Land Use Management Committee for a new hearing of our client's appeal. According to former staff of the clerk's office that we've interviewed, a haulout appeal scheduled for hearing in Plum requires that the clerk mail notice of the hearing to the appellant, the applicant, and other interested parties between 10 and 15 days prior to the hearing so that the parties can prepare for the hearing. Our office received proper mailed notice for the original hearing, whose action this council rescinded on January 28th. But contrary to standard clerk's office practice, we received no notice of the new hearing. And until late Monday of this week, we were unaware that Plum had conducted a hearing on February 22nd without the presence of the appealing party, our client. We object to the opening of a hearing today at city council when, on the agenda, it's been noticed as a quote "item for which public hearing has been held," which means to the public and to us that no hearing would be afforded today. As explained in our letter that was faxed and filed in council before this meeting, our client has been prejudiced by the fundamental violation of basic due process hearing rights. For those people watching this hearing on television, if you've appealed a city land use matter, you would be standing here and objecting if the city clerk gave you no notice of your hearing. And then, when the real estate developer showed up and the council representative showed up, but you did not because you were not notified, and then the council meeting held the hearing anyway without you, you would be standing here objecting, especially because it's a trampling of your constitutional rights. And that's what's happened here. To refuse to acknowledge the failure to give notice to an appealing party, the council today makes a fundamental mockery of the right of a hearing and your own action on January 28th, which remanded this matter back to Plum for a hearing, a new hearing. We are informed that the city attorney is now taking the position that no notice is required when a prior hearing action was rescinded. Such a position is contrary to what we are informed is the procedure of the clerk's office and contrary to fundamental due process. Instead of merely correcting this error by sending it back for hearing, you invite new litigation over fundamental due process rights, including what appears to be, perhaps, a pattern and practice of the city to fail to give proper notice of hearings. Our client is not available on such sort of notice, and we are not prepared to go forward on the merits at this time. Please enter our strenuous objection on the record. I, well, I was going to reserve two minutes to rebut because normally in an administrative hearing, the appellant goes first because we have the burden of proof. But apparently, that's not what's happening here. This hearing is highly irregular, and for those reasons, it would be easier and simpler to renotice the hearing and do this correctly in accordance with constitutional principles. Thank you.
Very much. Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you. Just a quick question for the city attorney. Is the city attorney's position that we have met the letter of the law regardless of what the, some interview with some city clerk was? This is, our legal requirement doesn't come from the city clerk procedure. It comes from whether or not we publicly notice this for the public. Is that correct?
Yes, the city has complied with the noticing laws.
Despite that, I will, in an abundance of caution, I mean, taking it back, what's most important, I believe, in the access of people is if somebody wants to give comments on it. And I believe it's communicated to my staff that Mr. Silverstein was unable to read the agenda last Friday because it was his birthday, and he just didn't read it that day because he was busy with stuff, which I respect, and that's okay. I will give an additional week so that folks can come here. I hope that'll give plenty of time. And I'm more than happy to hear whatever testimony in a week, even though we've met the letter of the law, to even go above and beyond in additional spirit, because I don't have a philosophical problem with it. I think that's a good government, even though the letter of the law has been met on this. So I will ask to continue for one week.
Thank you very much.
Sir, for clarification, our next meeting is Friday, March 18th. The 18th, the next meeting, excuse me. So this will be Friday, just to be crystal clear on the public record, so it's actually almost a 10-day, nine-day continuance, which should give plenty of public notice. I'm saying it out loud as well as that it will be on the agenda then. This is being continued until the 18th. And anybody on either side who would like to say anything further on that haulout would be more than happy to hear additional above and beyond the letter of the law testimony. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Without discussion and agreement, that will be the order. Next, Mr. Clerk, special two.
Special two, I believe the city attorney is going to speak to the findings.
Just yesterday, city staff was informed that the state legislature will take action next week on SBX 12 and SB 23 regarding renewable portfolio standards. Immediate action is needed to oppose the legislation due to the upcoming council recess. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substantive motion.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Ms. Perry?
Are we opening the roll on the findings?
Let's open the roll on the findings.
Okay.
Close the roll, tabulate the vote. The findings have been made.
Ten ayes. Okay, thank you. So the reason I brought this up today is this bill is moving rapidly through the legislative process, and although we as a city support 33% renewable energy use by 2020, SBX 1-2 would strip our local authority on where and how penalty funds would be spent. I believe that it's important for us as a city, city of Los Angeles, to maintain control of our assets and questions if this is against the charter, city charter have arisen. I think Mr. Miller, oh, there he is, Mr. Miller could call, come to the table and clarify this proposed bill and why we have a concern that it may be in contravention to our own city charter.
Certainly. I think the, as you indicated, the concern is not increasing the renewables standards. The concern is that the bill would also remove local authority to oversee the RPS program and put it under the California Energy Commission. They would have to adopt rules and regulations. If DWP did not comply, they would then refer it to the California Air Resources Board, which could levy fines. The bill does say that the money has to be spent within the geographic area, but again, that would be determined entirely by the state legislature, so the DWP board and the council would have no control over how that's spent. So it's a significant local control issue. The council has fought numerous times to retain control of the RPS program and DWP in general rather than be under state oversight.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Miller. Mr. Laban, are there others in the queue?
No, others in the queue. Let me call Mr. Alakon now, and I'll get back to you.
Great.
And Mr. Alakon.
Councilmembers, I couldn't disagree more with the maker of this motion that this is needed at this time. Number one, it is sending the worst possible message with regard to our position on renewable portfolios. We should maintain our stance as a policy message that we want to advance the renewable portfolio, not only for the jurisdiction of Los Angeles, but throughout the state of California. As other jurisdictions are failing to meet goals with regard to renewable portfolio, it decreases the opportunities in the marketplace to purchase renewable portfolio that would decrease our cost. So it is, it is not sound economics for us to put ourselves in a position to oppose legislation that ultimately will generate a market that is necessary for us to purchase renewable fuels at a reduced rate. Secondly, there may be tweaks that are necessary to this bill, but the five of us on this council that have served in the legislature know very well that no bill gets to the finish line without changes. I mean, very few bills, if any, get there. Maybe a handful every year, but more likely, they are negotiated to the last day, even the last minute sometimes. In this particular case, the standards that are being proposed are essentially less than the standards we have self-imposed. So it makes no sense whatsoever for us to put ourselves in the way of legislation rather than encourage legislation by support if we, if changes are made. rather than encourage legislation by support if we, if changes are made. And, and with regard to the local control, you know, we have to recognize that our, our energy purchases have an impact, not just on the City of Los Angeles, but they are intricately woven in an economic system throughout the state of California. And we have a responsibility to drive other jurisdictions to do a better job with their renewable portfolio, because I think the City of LA is doing the right thing. I can't support this, this motion because I think that, number one, it is, that we, we should be in a better position to negotiate things without have to, without having to put ourselves in a position of looking like we're opposed to what's good for the environment. I would mention, having said that, that every environmental group that I can think of supports this legislation. Labor supports this motion. Most power companies support this endeavor. So I think, I think this is wrong-headed. It is, it is not, it is not good for the, for us to send a negative message about purchasing renewable energy, and so I will vehemently oppose.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kukorian.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. I, I understand the concerns that are put forward in this about the impacts on local control, and they're, they're very real. I was the author of AB 64, which was a statewide 33% RPS bill that passed the legislature, and that was an important factor that we tried to take into account right up to the very minute in trying to determine the final language of that bill as well. So I think it's important that we weigh in on that, that point. To Mr. Alakon's point, I, I think in order to be consistent with the overall policy of this city to advance the ball towards a greater renewable portfolio, one suggestion might be that while preserving these objections that we have in this motion, if we put it forward as a position of supporting the legislation if it is amended to satisfy these concerns, I think that is a more consistent position with the traditional position that the council has taken on RPS, but it still sends the signal to the author that in order to get our final support, they have to, he has to accommodate the concerns about local control. So it's, it may seem like a semantic difference, but within the legislature, it's a difference of some significance, because when you see "oppose unless amended," that, that's a red flag kind of thing, whereas a support "if amended" is a strong signal to the author that this is what the City of Los Angeles needs to have in order to finally support the bill. So, so I would suggest, I don't know if it would be friendly or not, but I would suggest that we make this, or maybe I could ask Mr. Miller if you could comment upon whether or not there's a difference in your analysis if the position is "oppose unless amended" compared to "support if amended."
Well, I, I think at the bottom line, the answer is, as you indicated, Councilman, it's one of strategy, and it's also the way that our intergovernmental relation, intergovernmental relation function works, you know, what is the mayor authorized to present as an official position on behalf of the city? There's an, there's a suggestion on a support-if amended position, that if it isn't amended, then we're neutral. But again, in terms of strategy and the best way of accomplishing the goals of getting the changes that we need, I, I understand that those of you who have been in the state, you know, perhaps on the ground are better to answer that than I. Since we haven't been part of these discussions, I can't comment on, you know, who has been engaged in this, what their positions are, so I, I can't advise you on strategy since we haven't been part of any of the discussions. It is a position that the council has taken frequently, "support if amended," so.
Ms. Perry.
Well, you know, I've tried to take the advice of the chief legislative analyst who represents the City of Los Angeles in the interest of the city council, and what the concern is here is our allowing the state agency to usurp the Board of Water and Power, and the commissioners, and the city council, and the mayor in its authority over DWP and the way we address the penalties and the issues raised by the renewable portfolio operations. And so this seeks to eliminate the language that establishes the state imposed penalties for publicly owned utilities for failure to achieve RPS objectives and makes sure that we still have our control over the way that that would be administered. So I guess for me, it boils down to, you know, whether you want to maintain authority and control, or whether you want to allow the state to tell us what to do. Now, you know, Mr. Kukorian makes a very interesting proposal, although I don't know whether the other signatories on this motion would agree to it, and it's, the difference is probably so nuanced that only people in Sacramento are going to understand what that means. But as far as achieving our goal, I don't know whether it'll get us closer. What it might get me today is a few more votes in the affirmative for my motion, but ultimately, I don't know whether it'll achieve what we're trying to do here.
Well, Councilman, I think the, I think my response to that is what I would encourage the council to do, what I would encourage the council to do today, whether it's "support if amended" or "impose unless amended," is to take an action, because since you are not going to be in session, it could pass, I do think it's important for the city to stress that, that you believe that local control over these programs are important.
So if you add in the language that Mr. Kukorian proposes, does it still send, convey the message that we are stressing that we want to maintain local control, or does it send the message that we are open, we're open to that, but let's see what happens? What does it say? What does it mean?
It sends the message that, that you want to retain local control.
All right, so then, Mr., all right, so then, let's have Mr. Kukorian put his motion out there again, so that I can do a second, and then we can vote on this as amended and get it over with. Now, are you going to vote for it?
And we're going to just call, Mr. Alakon, would you speak for the microphone, please?
Oh, it was Mr. Alakon's suggestion. Okay, so that's how you all did it up there, huh? Okay, okay, all right. Now, why don't we have Mr. Alakon?
You may want to change your position now. You may want to change your position now.
Normally, I would, but if, if our chief legislative analyst says that it will get us, still can get us to where we need to be, all right, who's making the motion? Mr. Alakon, the originator?
It doesn't matter.
Mr. Kukorian?
Thank you, Ms. Perry. I would like to move that the special motion, or Special Two resolution be amended so that while not weakening the language in the final paragraph to, to exclude language in the bill regarding imposition of local control, that the position be stated as a "support if amended" with that exclusionary language.
All right, do you want second from Mr. Alakon?
Second by Mr. Alakon. Is that all right, Mr. Alakon?
There you go. Okay, just like old times. Okay, so can we do this as amended then? We vote on this as amended?
All right, Mr. Clerk, you have it down as amended?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, Mr. Kukorian, you're finished with your remarks? Very good. Mr. Miller, Ms. Perry, so?
It's all good.
No other speakers on the queue? As amended, Mr. Clerk.
Would you like to open the roll, sir?
Right, and there's no public comments on this card, right? We don't have any public comments?
I have been notified of none, sir.
And this is item number?
Special item number two.
Special item number two. Mr. Sacks, you have a card you got to turn it in. Please come forward right now, Mr. Sacks. Hold on, Council, for one moment. Special meeting, he has an opportunity to speak. As amended.
Thank you. Little concerns. This is, you're discussing the portfolio of the DWP, and how far does that extend into the operations? Because I read articles about the PUC and their legislative oversight for private utilities, Pacific Gas, Electric, San Diego, and Southern California Edison. But DWP is a private, is a public utility. So based on that fact and the fact that the state wants to take control over an energy portfolio, where does it stop? Does it include the operations? Because if it includes the operations, then the PUC allows for a ratepayer advocate, because the ratepayer advocate has oversight over private utilities. So would that duplicate the ratepayer advocate that was just approved by the county, by the city, the public vote? You, you start this iceberg, and like an iceberg, nine-tenths of it is below water. So plus, in addition, just to change the subject, when the, when the governor introduced his budget, LA County was locked out of the discussions, and they were quite upset about it. You're going to be on recess? What happens when they pass the vote to move with this legislation? What is your potential for a voice? What does that mean? LA County, the largest county in the country, and they were locked out of budget discussions. City of, County, City of LA, their concerns with the state legislation, are the state legislations concerned about the City of LA? I don't know.
Thank you very much. That completes public comment. Now we have it as amended. Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir. Would you like to open the roll?
You want to read anything into the record?
No, sir, we're good.
Very good. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tab, you'd like to vote.
Ten ayes.
Ten ayes.
Mr. President, would you like to send that matter forthwith?
Forthwith, please, very good.
Very good. Mr. President, would you like to recess the regular meeting and go into the special?
Yes, I would, thank you very much.
Alakon, Cardenas, Hahn, Weisler, Coetz, Kukorian, Labange, Parks, Perry, Ray, Rosenbaum, Smith, Wesson, Stein, Garcetti, ten members, President, and Coram, Mr. President.
Very good. Let's have the item, please.
Mr. President, there is a request from member to continue item 49 to March 18th.
Any objection to item 49? So ordered. Next item.
Very good. That brings us to item 50.
Good, I have two cards from item 50.
Prior to doing that, sir, item 50 is, is an item for which a public hearing has not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
All right, open the roll.
Cards.
I got two votes. Do I need to, to vote on the?
No, you're good, sir. You can take a vote, or you can send that without objection.
Here we go right now.
Uh, sir, sir, would you like to send the matter without objection? Consideration?
Without, yes, sir.
Very good.
Thank you. Mr. Sacks?
Yes, thank you. The exposition light rail line, more money for the exposition light rail line. Let's not forget that the project started at $300,000, went to $600,000, then over eight, eight, no, excuse me, $600 million, $800 million, almost $900 million into Phase Two to get more money. And now, Part B of this item on your agenda says, "In consultation with the city administrative office, continue to pursue all other available funding sources for this project, subject to council approval." So I direct you to count item number six on today's agenda. The LADOT and BOSS are giving the CRA Proposition C and Measure R funding. CRA's got money. Go to them. They're getting, how much? It doesn't say. But they're getting money from the LADOT. So you're taking money on item number six from the LADOT, giving it to the CRA, and then you're going to have the CAO look for more funding. That's almost reminiscent of what happened with the library tax. Pass the library, so they get more money out of the general funding, but where's the money going to come from? Where do you allocate it from? Where is the source of the funding? Well, we'll get to that later, once we solve the problem. And the problem is, where does the funding come from? This is like, you know, that story about chasing your own tail, or the fable about the dog with a bone looking at his reflection in the water. It's pretty much the same.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks, for your comment. Chuck Ray for the Mar Vista Community Council. Thank you, Mr. Ray, for coming to City Hall.
Thank you very much. I'm wearing a different hat here today than my usual hat as a DWP advocate. I'm the co-chairman of the Transportation Infrastructure Committee of the Mar Vista Community Council, and I just wanted to put on record the fact that back in August, the council passed a motion to ask the Expo Authority to strongly consider an overpass over Sepulveda Avenue, one of the busiest streets in the North, carrying north-south traffic in the west side. Now, to get that kind of overpass, we have to attack the question that there's never enough money for these projects. I want to congratulate Councilman Karts and Councilman Rosenbaum for being willing to use their TIMP money, or share of it, for making sure that this vital crossing is not impacted by having to have the Expo line at the grade level. The alternative, if we needed to, would be to try and seduce a developer, since there are developments in that general region proposed, to try and give us that money, but that would come at a price of variances and other things that I just prefer that we not get into. I also would like to suggest that now that we are moving into the Phase Two of the Expo project, it might make some sense to change the constituency of the Expo Board so that the councilmen from CD Five and CD Eleven, where this Phase Two will be, are better represented. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. That completes public comment on that. We have no speakers on the queue. And for the record, this is Sepulveda Boulevard. Mr. Rosenbaum, raise his hand.
It's a point of privilege. We'd like to continue this item till a week from Friday.
All right, is that a correct, is that okay with you, Mr. Clerk?
That would be at your pleasure, sir.
A week from Friday, we'll have a meeting on the 18th?
That is our next scheduled meeting, sir.
Good. Mr. Rosenbaum, so ordered.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item.
Mr. President, would you like to adjourn the special meeting and return to the regular?
Yes.
That brings us to items 46 and 48. I don't believe there are any speakers' cards on that matter.
Let's take these closed-door items.
That being said, sir, would you like to recess to closed session to discuss?
Yeah, the city attorney, you recommend closed session, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes.
Yes, all right, so by order of the council president, is hereby going to closed session for matters of interest to the City of Los Angeles. Sergeants, secure the chamber. Okay, Mr. Clerk, would you please, for the record, move us forward?
Item forty-six, sir.
Mr. City Attorney?
Mr. President, there is a recommendation for settlement in the amount of sixty thousand dollars and the continuation of plaintiff's paid administrative leave until April two, two thousand fourteen, in a case entitled Dorian Clark Harris versus City of Los Angeles.
Thank you. It's recommended by the city attorney. This is before us now, members. Over the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
So ordered. Next item.
That brings us to item number forty-eight. There is a recommendation for settlement in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars in a case entitled Alexandra Hafner versus City of Los Angeles and others.
Based on the recommendation of the city attorney, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
So ordered. Next item. See ya.
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
So ordered.
The desk is clear.
Thank you. Any announcements?
Any announcements? Mr. City Attorney?
Mr. President, I would recommend that council send everything forthwith.
Absolutely. By order of the President of Council, all matters forthwith.
Mr. Chair. I have an announcement.
An announcement? Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. American Red Cross Blood Drive, sponsored by my office, the mayor's office, and the entire LA City Council, is today until 3:00 PM. City Hall, fourth floor, media room.
Ms. Perry, thank you very much, and thank the Red Cross for all they do and all the volunteers. Any other announcements? Members, if we could stand for adjourned motions at this time. Stand for adjourned motions. All members. Abak, thank you very much. Adjourned motions, Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. We'll have a more formal notice on this, but just wanted to make the public aware of the recent death of Dr. Billy Ingram, founder of Marinatha Community Church in Los Angeles, who passed away yesterday. He was fifty-eight. He, the cause of death was a massive heart attack. The arrangements are pending, and many of you may recall that he not only was a very respected preacher, which he served for over forty years, he also had many other gifts in the fact that he was a photographer for the Getty and the Wire images, and also he was very noted as for as a voiceover artist on commercial activities. His particular treatment of the legacy with tribute to Black history was held as a seminal work and was a soundtrack to Black History Month on KGLH for decades. Again, the services are pending. We'll have more formal information, but just wanted to make sure the public is aware that Dr. Billy Ingram passed away yesterday morning.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks. And members, I ask we all adjourn in memory of Michael Zimmering, a highly successful and innovative movie and literary agent who passed away here in Los Angeles on the twenty-fourth of February. He was a ninety-four-year-old man. He was much loved and worked for William Morris Agency for nearly forty years, representing huge stars such as Carl Malden, Catherine Hepburn, Carl Reiner, and James Whitmore, among others, as well as the literary luminaries as Gore Vidal and William Rose. Zimmering grew up in Iowa, and during the Depression made his way to California following his brothers to Los Angeles. He became a member of the passing of Playhouse and was a radio actor in Hollywood during the golden age of radio, playing three parts in single episodes on classic radio dramas like Deluxe Radio Theater, Calling All Cars, and Wings of Destiny. Zimmering then became secretary to Orson Welles during the heyday of his work at the Mercury Radio Theater. It was long before he took his job at William Morris Agency as a secretary that seized on the opportunity to become an agent and made the most of it, shepherding the careers of his clients, many of whom were lifelong friends. Mike Zimmering was proud of his marriage to his beautiful and talented Connie Russell, a singer actress who performed at the nineteen fifty-four Academy Awards, and was a regular on the Dave Garraway Show, appearing in several movies alongside Edward G. Robinson. He survived by his two adult daughters, Lisa and Tina, who cherish his memory, along with his grandchildren, Jake, Lacy, Charles, and Emily. Members, I ask we all adjourn in memory of Mike Zimmering, much-loved individual. Seeing no orders before us, members, on this date, the ninth day of March two thousand and eleven, the City Council called the roll. Mr. Clerk? We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.